I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for November 20th, 2017, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in the executive session where we discussed real estate purchase, two lots, one owner is unknown, and the other, the Judah Eldredge property off Seth Whitefield Road in East Harwich. With that, I'm informing you that the town will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience wishing to video or audio tape must notify the chairman now. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First night, first up tonight on the weekly briefing, we have a presentation of a recognition plaque to Police Matron Patricia Scarnici.
Good evening. Chief Kilmet Office has apologized for not being here this evening. He is off Cape. Tonight, we're saying, I guess, maybe not goodbye, but a, like I should say, a short break in service, because I'll never say no for Pat to come back with us. But Pat started with us in 2001 as a matron. She's been with us for 16 years. She is a friend of the Harwich Police Department. She's been involved with our Citizens Police Academy, and she is just a fantastic person. So we'd like to honor her with this plaque tonight, and it reads, "Honoring a special friend and colleague, Patricia A. Scarnici, Police Matron, 2001 to 2017, in recognition of 16 years of dedicated service to the community of Harwich. Your dedication and kindness to all those that you have encountered, often during times, excuse me, often during trying times, is greatly appreciated and will never be forgotten. With great appreciation, your friends and colleagues at the Harwich Police Department."
Thank you.
When you have the opportunity to have a job that you enjoy, that you can be helpful, and that you are in a learning situation, it's a very good thing, and that's something I thank the Police Department for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to the town. Anyone else for weekly briefing?
Hi, Carolyn Carey, the Community Center Director. I just wanted to thank everyone who donated for the Cape Cod Cares for their troops. We sent out eight boxes full of things to go over, so it was a big success, and I wanted to thank you. I also wanted to tell you that on December 2nd will be the second open house at the Cultural Center, and it will be going on all day long from 9:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m., and we're teaming up with the chamber, so I'm not going to steal Cindy's thunder and let her talk about it, but just wanted to make sure you got that on your calendars, December 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again. We would just like to bring everyone's attention to our website and to the local papers, but the Police Department is now accepting applications for qualified individuals for the creation of eligibility list to fill future vacancies for the position of patrol officer. We highly encourage local residents to apply. We have, I won't say made the commitment, but we have made a commitment to try to hire as many as local people as possible. That was a very important thing with Chief Kilmet when he came onboard, so please check our website or the town's website, get the application in by December 8th to our Executive Assistant Katie Farley.
Great, thank you, Tom.
How are you, Chris Joyce, Voter Information Committee Chair? I'm here just to mention that we're very supportive of Pam Grosswald's possible appointment tonight to our committee, and we really believe we're going to benefit from her past experience on the Finance Committee and also on the School Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Williams, Harwich Chamber of Commerce. I have a little bit of a list, sorry. This Saturday is Small Business Saturday, so we are doing an event at the Chamber, giving out bags with various members' information. So 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, we'll have some coffee and goodies at the Chamber, and then we'll be out doing live videos via Facebook for some of the hot items at the different businesses. Then, I can't believe I'm saying this, but it's Christmas in Harwich. The following weekend is December 1st to the 3rd, and we're kicking it off in Harwichport Friday night with the annual tree lighting at 5:30, and then throughout Harwichport, 6 to 9:00. As Carolyn mentioned, we do have a few new things that we're partnering with the Harwich Cultural Center, and this year's Trolley to Christmas Town has a new location, both Saturday and Sunday evenings, at the Cultural Center. Unfortunately, I'm sorry to say, but tickets are sold out. And then our other big event there will be a new event called Rockin' Christmas in Harwich. It's presenting Katie Flynn and the Johns, and tickets are available at the Chamber. Then, Sunday, we have added a tree lighting in East Harwich, so we are venturing out to a variety of the different villages of Harwich this year. That tree lighting will be Sunday at 5:30, and there's caroling and the Christmas story. Finally, a new event that has been added on by White's Flowers and a variety of other businesses throughout Harwich is the Festival of Trees. So if anyone has any questions on that, please feel free to reach out to Amy White at White Flowers, but you'll be able to bid on auction tree eyes, trees, as well as raffled trees, and they're extremely gorgeous, so I hope everyone will join us. And again, it's Christmas in Harwich, December 1st to the 3rd.
Thank you, Cindy.
Good evening, Art Boden, Harwich Housing Committee. I'd like to make a comment on the Harvard, on the Cape Housing Institute sponsored by the Housing Assistant Corporation and the Community Development Partnership. This was a six-week program put on at four locations on Cape Cod. The subject material covered various housing issues, including needs, zoning, financing, making a case for affordable housing, that's a new one, regionalization, and forming an action plan. It's, I'd like to note here that Harwich had a high rate of participation, both from the town administration and from the Housing Committee, and everyone knows who you are. All the speakers were excellent and did a great job presenting their respective topics. It was by far the best program I've ever attended on housing. But unfortunately, this type of program needs to be attended by those of the community that don't believe there is a need for affordable housing, at least not in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Michael, can I add to that very quickly? I'll cheat Art and just quickly list the things to consider. Julie and I were there at the end of the meeting that we should consider going forward, because I think they're relative to conclude those remarks. And very quickly, the things that we were asked to consider at the end of this workshop were that we have a housing production plan. We do, and ours is recent. We're ahead of a lot of the other towns, so thanks to everyone involved. CPA funds dedicated to housing. We do that as well, of course, with CPA. We have our 10%, and we think we exceed that most years on funding. Do we have, should we consider looking at tax incentives to help affordable housing? This is a discussion maybe we should look at in the future. Do we have dedicated housing staff? As a board, we've been looking into that, as, you know, hopefully we can share with some other town. Is it one of our top priorities in town, is the Board of Selectmen, is the community, is affordable housing? We talk about a lot, and I'm not sure we've formalized that as a priority, but that's a thing to consider. Do we have a accessory unit bylaw? That we're working on. Zoning options, have multiple zoning as right and where it makes sense. And last, our regional cooperation, and I think we've been moving ahead on that. So we have our, we have a work in front of us, but we're moving, I think, in the right direction. I just wanted to make those points at the end of the meeting. And I agree with Art, and I think Julie would concur, it was a, it was a very informational workshop.
Sure was, yeah. We also learned about a lot of different tools out there, so I think that we need to move forward on engaging those tools to help us in the process.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Yeah, and actually, in support of what Art had said, it's one of his last comments, amusing the late Bob Murray, in all deference to what you just said, it doesn't mean anything unless I see somebody move into a house. So we're doing a lot of good things, but-
That's the bottom line.
The bottom line is, we need to see people moving into-
Couldn't agree more.
Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Moving on to the consent agenda. Don, do you want to add dates to C?
Can we pull C, and I'll just-
Yeah, we're going to pull C right now.
Okay, I'll pull C temporarily. Mr. Chair, I move with the following consent items. A is approved minutes, November 6th, 2017, regular meeting. B is approved request by the Fire Department for tent fee waiver for homeless for the holidays. It's a fundraising event at Brooks Park. C, we'll come back to. D is approved contractors. You've got Galaxy Integrated Technologies in the amount of $143,195 for a security system for public safety building and authorized town administrator to sign. And E is approved application for hawkers and peddlers license for pilgrim lodge to sell Christmas tree and waive associated $60 fee.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve consent agenda A, B, D, and E. Any discussion? Chris, I'd just like to add for D on the Galaxy contract, to strike the clause if applicable under Article 16 prevailing wage, as it is applicable.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don, you want to read C?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I motion to approve the following appointments. Planning Board for full position, James Joyce, for term to end at 6:30-20. For Board of Appeals, Megan Mayhew, for term to expire 6:30-18. This is going to be a stomach block. Dan Towark?
Yep.
Okay. To an alternate position on the Board of Appeals for term to expire 6:30-19. Pam Grosswald for full position on the Voter Information Committee for term to expire 6:30-19. And Anne Howe is a full member of the Waste Water Support Committee for term to expire 6:30-19.
Second.
I think we want to make one comment, though. We, James Joyce is a full member, and Megan Mayhew is an alternate.
Yeah.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda C with the addition of the expiration dates. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up, public hearings and presentations, annual meetings with selectmen. First up tonight are the Water Commissioners. Gary Carrero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you want, does all come up, or is it just?
You can read it.
Okay.
The net doesn't like it.
The net doesn't like it. Well, good evening, Members of the Board, Gary Crowe, the Chair of the Harwich Water Commissioners, this evening to present to you our annual meeting. The Board consists of a three-person member, elected Board, myself as the Chair, Mr. Thompson as our Vice Chair, and our clerk is Danette Gonzalez, who will be retiring December 1st, 2017, after 22 years of service. So I just want to thank her and her family for your service to the town. It's greatly appreciated. Our meetings are generally held every other Wednesday at 7:00 in the morning at the Water Department Conference Room. Seeing that we are going to have a vacated seat, I'm sure that we can be flexible to be either change the time or the day, so that someone that might be interested and can't make that time of that day could open it up to other people who might show some interest to that. Part of our past accomplishments, the biggest one was the low throw tank that's up and running. The radio read upgrade, which is wireless now, so our employees can drive through, and it takes less time to actually read our meters. And our water sampling and tests are done every month, and we just received the 2017 drinking wa, I'm sorry, 2017 drinking water award recipient again. So that's really a great accomplishment for the Water Department for what they're doing. Our goal is, our biggest thing we're working on are coming up, the skater, which is the supervisory control and data acquisition, which is basically the main computer that runs the pumps and our wells. That's in the process of being installed right now and should be up and running shortly. And I would say the biggest project besides that is the Lower County Road. We'll be running new pipes and pipes off of the main Lower County Road while the Highway Department is widening that road. So we're trying to time it so that while the road is dug up, we can put new pipe down. One other thing, too, for water consumption for fall of 2017, we pumped 447,906,000 gallons of water, which is roughly 53 million gallons less than the previous year. I mean, it was a very wet year, and it was very noticeable. I think the last thing I'd like to touch base on is that we do offer a service-type protection plan to the residents and our customers. Right now, we have currently about 862 people who do participate in this project, and we have roughly 10,000 customers. So it's just something that if something happens to your water line from the street to your water meter, and you are participating in this plan, we go out, fix it at no charge, and it's a $62 charge for a resident to sign up for this. If a resident does want to sign up for it, once we receive that payment, 90 days, and they'll be part of the protection plan. I think the last thing I'd like to add is our retained earnings. We're showing retained earnings of about $2.3 million, and about a million dollars of that will be going towards the funding of the Lower County Road project.
Thank you, Gary.
So if you have any questions?
Questions from the Board, Larry?
No, nice job.
Oh, thank you.
Good job, committee.
Julie?
I wish the net would say it ain't sold, 22 years. You're making me feel too long. Congratulations.
Julie?
No, great report, and you guys do a great job. One question I had asked a while ago at the Water Department, I'm just curious. Are we going to any position where we would have second meters for irrigation instead, so that you could split?
We don't have a second meter for irrigation. What we do ask, if you, we did put our survey for irrigation. I'm not sure where we are with that, but we do ask that you have a professional plumber, licensed plumber, to install it, especially with a backflow device, because when you're hooking up any kind of service to our service without that backflow, it could really disrupt the entire water service.
Okay.
But no, we don't have a second meter for.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't written that, Alan, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Janelle?
I don't have any questions, thank you, Gary.
Don?
Yeah, I wanted to also take an opportunity. I've known Danette for a lot of years. The town has been well-served by her and her father before her. The town really owes a great debt of service for those folks. So, yeah, my appreciation, it's going to be big shoes to fill.
I concur. We will miss you. Gary, we have posted, not as much, not at 7:00 in the morning. Gary, we've posted the vacancy, but just to alert the public, there is a vacancy for a Water Commissioner, and they can fill out an application in the front office, Town Hall, and then we will be having a joint meeting soon to discuss any applications we get.
All right, excellent.
We do have one applicant so far, but only one that I know of.
Do you have any idea what a timeframe would be on that, what are you looking at?
No.
Not that I'm in a rush, just so I can try and plan, like, to be here, basically.
I'll let you know, no.
Excellent.
So they're elected, though.
But we, because it's a resignation, we'll appoint until election time. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Next up on the new business is posting method for public meetings. Oh, I'm sorry, community preservation. I swear I'm early. Community Preservation Committee Annual Report. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman. I'd like, I have a couple of members here from the Board, I'd like to introduce them to you tonight. Kathy Green, Dan Torx. The committee's made up of nine members through our selectman appointees. It represents housing, recreation, historic, commission, open space, real estate, conservation, and the planning board. All the members have been completed and have completed their ethics, efficacy exam. They've been sworn in, the present members. We're still looking for, well, after tonight, we'll still be looking for two more members. The committee is now presently considering 16 applications. Total categories follows. Historic, $461,867. Housing, $1,210,000. Open space, $569,000. Recreation, $1.2, $1,126,500. The total request add up to $3,501,367. The total amount available, and this number is fluid, is $2,732,809.03. And that includes the debt service for the FY '18 year of $608,950. When I put this little package together, I put a package together for each of you individually, and that packet was an application, the application we use for CPC funding, and some background information on what we thought would be the, to meet the needs of the community that would be submitting those applications. At this point, that was done two weeks ago. At this point, I hope you've had a chance to read them, go through the information. Any information that you can recommend to the CPC Board upon what you read, what you see, would you please put into writing? And that can go through Don, because Don's the liaison for the Board. Anything questions?
Thanks, David. Questions, Don?
Nothing other than to say, sit tight for another 20 minutes, and you'll have another member, I hope.
Okay. Janelle?
So I did read that packet. Thank you for bringing that to our mailbox. I appreciate that. So I just have a question about the makeup, and this is really more a question for us. In reading the membership now, I see that both selectmen appointees are actual members of other committees that are represented on CPC. And I wonder about the, what do I want to say, ethics of that, really, you know, the appropriateness, because though they're not necessarily representing, for instance, Cindy, the housing, she comes with a housing kind of slant in her discussion. So my thoughts are, should the two selectmen appointees be people who are neutral in respect to the other committees that are represented on CPC?
I think it's a very good point. I've had the same thought myself. Unfortunately, I'm not going to talk about it tonight because it's not on the agenda, but thank you, and I will agenda it in the next meeting. Thank you for that. Any questions for Dave?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Dave.
But that is, that is a good-
And thanks for that information. It was great to read ahead of time.
Great. Don, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, it's over what Janelle said, and it's not for any action tonight, but from what I can see, we need to have a broader discussion about how the ex officio members get put there, and whether there are universal brokers that are put there by the selectmen. So this has to be a bigger discussion, but you're right, there's a problem.
Thank you. Julie?
I had a similar thought to what Janelle just expressed, so I agree, we should discuss that further. And, you know, one of the other things that I noticed in reading through the info, and thank you, it's good information and very complete, is that the criteria, some of the criteria at the beginning talks about, you know, feasibility, urgency, and affordability. So I think that, you know, I'm sure it's difficult when you have all these different requests in front of you in terms of the specifics of meeting those criteria, but I think that we do have a couple of items on that that we can consider, pretty urgent and for the overall benefit of the town, so I just hope that we will focus on those, you know, feasibility, urgency, and affordability. You know, the library comes to mind, for one thing, we've been talking about that for a long time, that affects the whole town and vision of our town, really, as you come through there, and there's a couple of others, but I'm just saying, I appreciate the info, and it's good, because I think sometimes it gets lost, and everybody's looking for their wants, but going back to what the basic foundation is, we should be paying close attention. Thank you.
Just a note on that, a few line items down, I have general discussion on CPC, so the Board will discuss its priorities and hear from Chris on Chris's priorities.
Okay.
Larry?
I too, thank you for the package, it was very complete. Could you, when you have the historic, the numbers you've given us for the various buckets, I'm pretty sure we exceed the minimum requirement for each of those reserve funds. We exceed the money that we require to put into those.
Right.
Remind me what the reserve fund, what's our minimum requirement we need for that 10%? Is it $157,000?
Well, each one of the, each one of the, each one of the three buckets is 10%.
10%, right.
Right. And then you can draw from the indesignated fund.
Yeah. So that's important to know, and all the requests, where at least they're fulfilling our obligations. The other comment I would make is, I really appreciate, and this is, I think, where you asked for possible applications in future years. So we have an idea of what the total project takes, because occasionally in the past, we forgot to do that, and it come as a shock that we needed, the project was going to have money needed in years two, three, and four, so that's a, that's a need to add, so we know what's going on. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dave, great report.
All righty. One other thing, I would like to thank the administration. Chris has been a tremendous help to Kathy and I putting numbers together, and the Finance Director has done a remarkable thing with the numbers she's helped us with, helped us with our understanding of municipal finance.
Thank you, Dave. Don, you had a point?
Yeah, before you leave, Dave, I'd be neglectful if I didn't mention, I mean, you kind of inherited a circumstance that I'm grateful that you were willing to inherit, taking the chairmanship of that. I'm hoping, because we've had discussions about this when Jack was the Chair, I'm hoping that when the cycle is done, that you'll have some time to sit down and ponder rules that have to do, if you want to submit, you not only have to give this form by this date, but we expect you to go in front of this committee for this purpose to get something or other, so that we can review it. So that's all in writing somewhere. I mean, it's, I feel like a broken record, but I-
No, I understand.
You and I've talked about this.
Right.
Again, you kind of walked into this, like, when it was in full, full bore mode to try to get these applications done.
That'll start in January, Don.
Terrific, and I appreciate your service, I really do.
All righty.
Thank you.
Have a good night, folks.
Step on the new business is the posting method for public meetings. Don, I'm going to let you run with this one.
Yeah, you don't have anything in your packet, because I've only gotten to the point of knowing where we are, so that I can know where we're going. It goes back to 2010 that we started changing the way we operated, and then in 2012, the town administrator codified that further for this Thursday noon thing. There's two moving parts here. I'd like to get some sense from the Board about where they want to go. I personally know, because this was a problem just forever on the Board of Selectmen's part, that people would call, members of the Board of Selectmen would call Friday when we were open, at like 2:00 in the afternoon, and say, can I put something on the agenda for Monday? The attempt initially was to create two, the Thursday at noon is a hard deadline to stop that from the Board members pulling things or putting things on, and try to get some stability going. How it got to the point where every Board is affected, now it's getting to a point, with me looking at this, is like you're actually impeding the administration of the government, because in some extreme cases, you could be looking at weeks to actually hold a meeting, even if it's urgent, because there's, there are no loopholes in the committee handbook or in the policy. It is what it is. Secondarily, I think we made a horrible mistake as a Board in not recognizing the destination- Secondarily, I think we made a horrible mistake as a board in not recognizing, the destination is quite different from how you got to the destination. And frankly, the town clerk has always been the gatekeeper and the holder of records. There has never been a point where that wasn't the case. So, to put that person in a secondary position in the posting process was kind of odd, to say the least. And I, I'm pitching that whatever we do, the mechanism of submitting something to the internet shouldn't be confused with who's really responsible for the records, and that is the town clerk. So, I anticipate trying to draft something for our consideration that shows that, not necessarily making the clerk put something on the internet, but showing that that's the official imputer. You get your paper, you bring it there, she stamps it, that's when it's officially timed in. So, if that's less than forty-eight hours, it doesn't matter to me that it's on the internet, because she's not even aware of it at that point. But those are the two moving parts here. One is actually stopping us from doing business in a kind of arbitrary way, if that's not necessarily something that we wanted to do. And I think it was an unanticipated consequence. In the instance where we have holidays, the Thursday becomes a Wednesday. And so, now you're looking at a week and a half that you're blowing off before you can even hold a meeting. That's, that's my report. So, I did, I want some guidance, but I would suspect, I'm urging you to put the clerk back into the role of primacy as the person, who's officially the person who receives the posting, and that from there, we start talking about how we post.
Julie?
So, in that regard, I agree with you. I think it should follow the, the path that it's supposed to follow, where the clerk is the keeper. But if somebody, so would that take out the ability for them to email agendas? Let's say you dial it back a day, but then going to your point, now we're talking about lengthening the process before you can have a meeting. So, does the, does the committee member have to bring the physical agenda in so the clerk can stamp it, or can they email it?
I haven't gotten that far. That's why I'm asking guidance.
Larry?
Yeah, of course, I agree that should, if the requirements to go through the clerk first, it should do that. We should follow the process, you know, there's probably an oversight somewhere along the way. In terms of the, of the Thursday cutoff date, originally, we did that to make it, we thought possible for Sandy and Ann, you know, to handle the physical aspect of getting the postings up and make it happen. My broader question is, is, you know, we should think about what the purpose of that was, overall. And the purpose was to give people a chance, to be sure people had a chance to review what the agendas are before the meeting date. And so, we want to, maybe Thursday noon is, you know, too short, but we don't want to forget, I think, what the guidance was on this whole posting activity, was to be sure, you know, people get detailed agenda items, so they know what's going to be talked about. We've been pressing that issue. But they also then have reasonable time to review the agenda and decide whether they want to hand and so on. So, you know, if we have a, if we go, say, to later on Friday, that gives very short time for people to know what we're doing on Monday night. I just want to be sure we keep that, the overall intent in mind when we look at the cutoff. You know, I think in that aspect there, too, what physically works and what meets the intent of the, I don't know, this is the law or what it is, the posting requirement, but it would meet the intent.
Yeah.
What I would follow up with on that, though, Larry, is the unanticipated consequence is, if you don't get something in by Thursday at noon, then you're looking at a week, a week and a half away now.
Well, maybe we could switch from Thursday to make it a concrete follow the law, you know, say, it's got to be two days or forty-eight hours ahead of the, of the schedule, and maybe that does work.
And I would totally agree with you. What I was actually anticipating trying to build into this is that the town court gets it to stamp in, but it's going to go on the internet. And it's going to be the responsibility of the, of the individual poster to make sure that that occurs as a follow-on. But that's not necessarily the official part. Once it's on the internet, I, I would like it to be there as long as possible. But what we're doing is stopping the administration of government arbitrarily for everybody for more than a week. Because if it's not there by Thursday at noon, then you got to be doing next Thursday at noon for the subsequent week. And I'm pretty sure that's not what our intention was.
Didn't, I mean, Jamie had explained to us that there was more of a posting issue in trying to get all that information on the website, right? That there were issues with getting certain agendas.
And I need to sit down with both Jamie, I've already started to sit down with Anita. The real, the real problem here is, is that everybody's got a picture, seven years ago, in internet years, is like seven hundred years ago.
Yeah, right.
It was a lot more difficult, it took forever to get on the internet with an awful lot of government stuff. But now it's becoming a lot more routine to do. It's not as cumbersome, we have a well-established site, and I want to see what her concerns are relative to that, but I can't believe that it's a ten-day concern.
Is the internet our, is it an official posting? Is it, is it the physical posting? Or is it, what shows up on the website?
It, it became the official posting, and I, I'm not too sure we wanted that to be the case, because that means you could bypass the clerk and the stamp.
So, in 2012, the board voted to make it an alternative electronic posting method. And I think that that's, was trying to change with times. I've noticed other towns and even the county have gone backwards now, and they're using their bulletin board in the lobby as the official posting spot. And I would hope, Don, that you would include Jamie and Anita in the, in the discussion and have them really put their two cents in, since they're the ones that are going to be doing this. But I would like to see the official posting spot be paper in the lobby, and in a case that we've had twice now in the last two months on revised agendas. Somebody trying to revise an agenda is going to, on a weekend, to try and advise.
Well, that's my question, because it's harder to do if it's a physical posting, you can't do that on weekends. But we need to decide.
So, we, with paper, you walk down, you write revised on it, the date, now you've covered open meeting law, and you can put a disclaimer on the website saying the official posting is in paper in the lobby. So, you know, with that in mind, Don, I, I personally would vote towards paper postings in the lobby, back up on the internet, however it works for Jamie and Anita.
Well, hearing all this, my next step is to sit down with both of them, come up with something collaborative, and then bring it back to you.
And then whatever we decide to do, forty-eight hours is the law.
Yeah.
So, five minutes before forty-eight hours, if five people come and give their agendas to Anita, it's not realistic that she's going to get them on in time or posted in time. So, we still need to be cognizant of the amount of time that it takes Anita to do her job and Jamie to do her job. So, we'll look forward to it coming back, Don.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is a request to change the name of the Harwich Disability Rights Committee to the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee. Request by Matt Hart, the chair of that committee. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening. This is a discussion that started with the ADA in Washington, DC. Excuse me. We're having an aging society, I'm one of them. You've got a lot of people that aren't considered disabled, but are still having a problem with accessibility and getting around different areas. I think part of this is also because they wanted to change the name a little bit to be more inclusive. When I went to the sessions where I was at school for the ADA in Boston, they were asking, it's not a requirement, but asking if the different towns would move their name, if they could, from disability to accessibility, so it includes more.
Don, you did, oh, Chris, you want to?
I was just going to, I asked staff, I know the question had come up about, was this done in the charter? Was it done in the bylaws? And we actually, it was a board policy, ironically, on Tuesday, March nineteenth, nineteen ninety-one, the Board of Selectmen unanimously to change the name from the Five-O-Four Committee, which is what I guess originally was, to the Harwich Disability Rights Committee. So, it is within the board's purview to, to change the board policy.
That's right.
Can I get, can I get a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move that we change the Harwich Disability Committee's name to Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee, or HRC.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the request of name change. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is recommendation to appoint Mary Mizlowski as the Housing Committee's representative to the Community Preservation Committee. Welcome, Mary.
Good evening.
All right, thank you for including your minutes in the packet. I noted that it's a draft, but thank you, so the board could see your minutes when you, when you made this appointment. So, it is before us to confirm. Don?
I'd like to make a motion upon the recommended, the voted recommendation of the Harwich Housing Committee, that we appoint Mary Mizlowski as an ex officio member of the Community Preservation Committee with a term to expire six thirty twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the motion as read. Any discussion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Hey.
Are you at discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that, I don't know what we'd do without you, Mary. I mean, you're becoming the glue that's holding almost every committee together.
Happy to help. It'll be a busy, it'll be a busy season, but.
You can sleep after two AM.
I'm happy to fill a vacancy.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mary.
The reading starts early.
Okay, next up, award of Sacquetucket landslide contract and approval of contract amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to do a little bit of overview, but I'm going to have John go up. We do have a little bit of a presentation. I think, just to put things into context, I know I brought this up at the last meeting under administrator announcements, and, you know, I, I walked away from the board's charge, if you would, to make sure that we keep in there the garage and the harbor master's office in one. So, John's going to do a little bit of overview, but the two things that you're being asked to do tonight is to basically award the original contract that came in from Eastward Companies at two point eight million dollars. We did about a hundred and forty-seven thousand of value engineering. Just to put that in context, it was about four to five hundred thousand from the lowest bid to the next lowest bid. So, we're still within that, you know, very much within that margin. So, in the packet, the signature package tonight, you have two documents. One is the contract, the AIA contract, which is there. And then the intent of that is to amend it down to the number that we believe we need in order to make the project go forward of two point six four nine million dollars. So, just so the board's aware, we have those signature documents in, in the materials for you. And then turn it over to John.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Redon, Harbor Master, good evening. Chris kind of outlined essentially what I was going to kind of speak to. I'm here to recommend that we award the construction contract to Eastward Companies. They were the low bidder. They are a local and very reputable construction company. And, you know, I think we'd be in, in great hands should we award the contract. As Chris alluded to, you know, over the past several months, we have been working pretty hard with our contracted architect, and Tim Sawyer is here from Brown, Linnquist, and Finicio, and Rayber, who is our architect on the project, and the leadership of Eastward Companies, to, you know, do some due diligence to try to reduce the, the contract cost to where we could move forward with our, with our budget. And we're very appreciative to both for working with us. As you know, and you've seen, you know, the, the plan has been in place for, for some time, and, and it's a result of about twenty public meetings that the Sacquetucket Development Committee held with, with a lot of public input. And I'd just like to say thanks to those members who helped create this, this renovation plan, in addition to the Waterways Committee, who, every step of the way, provided great support and great advice and direction to us. And many of the people from the Waterways are here tonight, so thank you. So, the plan really, I'll hand it over to Tim here shortly, but there's, there's three aspects of our plan that, that we'll look at. The base bid is what is being proposed that we award, and that does not include the snack shack, which was bid as an ad alternate. Because of the budget that we have, it just didn't, it's just not possible. So, the snack shack is not included. However, as I think the board is aware, we have recently had a, an investment group, a group of Harwich residents who have come forward with great interest in, in doing a private partnership with the town, essentially building a restaurant on-site. And so, I anticipate we'll be trying to put together an RFP, and we'll certainly come in front of this board at a later date to discuss that potential public-private partnership. The other aspect is the septic system. We did bid the septic system, and CC Construction was the low bidder, and they are prepared to execute should we award that contract. So, if we're successful tonight and you decide to award this contract, I expect to be back in front of you next week recommending that we award the septic system to CC Construction. And the third piece is the Downey property and the site, the parking lot and the site work that needs to be done there. And so, you know, I'm hopeful we have, I, I think we're, we're looking to try to do some of that work in-house with our, our Public Works Department, and we're hoping to have some remaining funds from our appropriation to put towards that, towards the lot work. But also, as I think you know, we still have a great potential to get some grant funding. As you know, I've submitted a Seaport grant for a million dollars towards this project that is under review currently, and the award schedule is for January. We also submitted, with the help of Matt Hart, a grant, ADA grant, that I think we'll be very competitive for, a big piece. And one of the primary objectives of this plan was to improve pedestrian safety and accessibility. And I think our plan does that, and I think it's recognized, and it ties well into our waterside project that has a handicap accessible ramp system for all our passenger boats and designated slips for, that are handicap accessible. And I think that's being recognized. And we also submitted a CPC grant relating to public access. So, I think we have some potential to get some additional funding to help, to help complete this project. So, with that said, just as kind of a refresher, I'll hand it over to Tim Sawyer, who will kind of go through the site plan real quick.
Tim Sawyer, Brown, Linnquist, Finicio, and Rayber Architects. And we've got a few slides here, but I've got packets that's a little easier for you guys to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And basically, what I handed out was, we wanted to illustrate that the plan, as we are proposing to be approved today in the contract, is essentially the same plan that was voted on at town meeting. Even the bid plan, the very first plan, which you're looking at here, is, is the one that has the minor cost savings modifications that we really appreciate Eastward Companies working very diligently with the project team to come up with a handful of smart cost-saving opportunities within the project to hopefully get the project moving into construction. But you'll see between the first two pages and the first two slides, that there's very little change to the plan itself. All the primary elements and the essence of the project are intact, obviously, the garage, which is out on twenty-eight, the Harbor Master Building, the entire boardwalk that provides access that John was mentioning down to the docks, and as well as even the snacks, the, the artisan shacks that are along the green, greenway. The significant piece that obviously isn't there is the snack shack, which was an ad alternate to begin with. We knew the budget was going to be tight, so we wanted to leave some flexibility to, to try to get the project to move forward, even if, even if that came in higher. We did remove one section of elevated walkway that connected the two lots, as well as we ended up changing a foundation type for the elevated boardwalk and decks that proved out. that proved out to be actually significantly less costly. Either, either type is a non-conventional deep foundation due to the types of soils that we discovered at the site, which significantly ramp up costs and however you do them. But we were able to realize some savings by changing it from a driven timber pile to a helical foundation system, both in the velocity flood zone as well as the AE flood zone. So again, the first slide is what we're proposing today. The second slide is what was bid on. So you can see there's not much change in the two plans, other than the snack shack is not there. And then the last slide is what was voted on at town meeting, which is virtually identical to what was the bid plan. And with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Larry, why don't you start?
Excuse me. The, in terms of your job, I probably directed this towards you. The, the memory gave us, you, you state that the, the initial site work of former Downey property. I guess that's what's being done in-house. Is, is that paving the, the parking lot down? Do you have any idea what that will, that'll be added on costs later? Is that how you're seeing the Downey property parking?
I, I think, you know, right now where we, we're at, I think we're going to try to reappropriate about $90,000 or so that we currently have left over from our, our engineering design money. And that, in addition to some of the money that's left over from the appropriation that we hope to have, will go towards doing the site work. And right now, I think we're looking at doing a, a gravel type, what do you call that, stone dust type, similar to what some of the facilities are here, instead of paving it. But I think we'll, we'll kind of look and evaluate it as the project goes, but that, that currently is the plan for that.
And that includes some landscaping?
That includes, exactly.
Nice looking?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any idea when you add, I'm not going to count all these. How many parking spaces we have in?
I, we substantially increased the number of parking. I want to say we added approximately 88.
Tim, I have that number specifically. I counted them in anticipation that you're going to ask that, Larry. I'm just kidding, but I do, I do have those numbers.
Might get one of the others would.
We have a total of 248 vehicle parking spaces. We have 90 on the Downey property, 131 on the west lot, and 27 on the east lot, and that's a vehicle.
And how's that compared to what we have now?
It's more.
Right now.
I wasn't that prepared.
I've got that one. Existing, there's 141.
Okay, so we're.
Not including the state parking lot. This is just the, the town marina lot.
Okay, not including Downey property.
Correct, because currently that's unimproved, and even though parking does happen there, it's not marked spots.
Okay, so we're, there's a few parking spaces increased, but not all, well, the Downey's all new.
That's what I meant. I mean, the Downey is all new, so you got, you know, 90 additional parking spots.
And this doesn't affect the space we have for, for boat trailers? We sell the same number of parking lots on the, on the ramp side?
Yes, we do. Vehicle parking spaces.
For the people bringing their boats and parking.
Right, we have 53 trailer parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Julie?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So with the idea that we will be able to move forward with the snack shack, and I don't want to get off on that context, because I know we're not talking about that tonight, but the septic, would we hold off and take that piece out of the, the overall cost?
What we would do is we'd move forward with the septic system that we've designed for the current base plan. The septic system that was, was bid was sufficient for the public restrooms that we have, the Harbor Master Building, but not the snack shack.
Right.
So should a private entity come forward and want to build the restaurant, they would also put in a septic system, septic system that would support their restaurant operation, and they would fund that.
They would fund that, so they would fund the overall septic.
That's correct.
Right, so that could come out of your, like, out of your.
No, ma'am, there would be two separate septic systems. We would have ours, and then they would have a separate septic system.
Okay, so we still would though want to go with the timing. We'd want to look at the timing on that, right?
So we would just make sure that, from the, from a, a space perspective, that we would provide sufficient space allocation so their septic, septic system could be installed on-site. But we can't wait for that to happen. We're going to move forward.
Right, okay.
Should we approve this, to put our septic system in.
Yeah, just, I, I think to that, we, we've given some thought, and actually I've had a, a conversation with our attorney as well, that I think we, in order to make the snack shack or the restaurant go as a separate entity, we'd have to do an RFP. Currently, we can go 10 years. I think any investment of a half million to a million dollars, we need to go beyond 10 years. So we would need town meeting. So the RFP would include their own septic, the restaurant facility, and then the boardwalk that's affiliated with that structure.
Okay.
So that, that would be currently the way we would have to have that configured. And timing-wise, you know, I think that it's going to be interesting that will people invest with the condition that we rely upon town meeting to go from 10 to 30? Or should we time the RFP to right after town meeting if they approve 10 to 30?
Right, okay.
So that's a decision we still need to make, I think.
Okay, and then the, the difference in the pilings, that's going to be in the front area?
It's primarily under the elevated deck that's around the building to provide accessibility, because due to the, the flood zone, which is over the entire site, the buildings have to be elevated grade around, the Harbor Master Building's around nine feet, and the finished floor is at 13 feet. So we have to make that up and provide stairs and ramp access and access into the buildings with the elevated deck. And then the boardwalk that connects to the deck takes you all the way down to the, to the docks. That entire area, not including the building, would be the helical piles, or, yeah, helical piles. And the building would remain the way it was originally designed, as timber piles. We looked at that as helicals, and it proved to be a little bit different design-wise and would have been more expensive. So in this case, with the buildings, stay timber, and then the deck and the boardwalk go to helical.
Okay, and then the elevations from nine to 13, so does that give us the four extra feet that gives us the better deal on insurance?
Oh, yeah, you're, you're above flood elevation, and, and actually, it's a little bit better than what you're actually required to do.
Right.
For a couple of reasons. One, we're so close to the velocity zone. It's just good practice to try to get up a little bit higher. But also, the CZM grant required that you do better than what you're required to do to account for future sea level rise. Now, it's hard to predict what future sea level rise would necessarily be. But in this case, since we were going with piles anyway due to the soils, it was easy enough to raise the building a little bit more. But you still have to kind of strike a balance, how far above grade you're going. Because you can think about it, every foot or every inch vertically you go, that requires one foot length of run of ramp. So if you go up 30 inches, you're going 30 feet of ramp. So it, it adds up quite a bit, and then you're, you're doing a lot of ramping and switchbacks. And ideally, you want to limit that just to maintain access and accessibility, just for people not having to go up so high to get to the buildings.
But it's great that we're going above what we, we have to do. And then in terms of storm runoff, stormwater runoff with the parking, do we, that's factored into this plan?
It's really not being, at least on the marina lot, it's not being affected. We're not changing the drainage patterns. We're actually reducing the amount of hardscape slightly. On the Downey property, the, if, if it were to be paved, which is what the original design was, the storm, stormwater runoff was being taken care of with drainable or permeable pavement on the downward side of it. So it would, it would, I, it really wouldn't reach the edge of the pavement. It would, it'd permeate through. If it ends up being a gravel or a stone dust type of surface, it's going to be permeable pretty much by itself.
Okay, great, thank you.
Gina?
So I just have a few questions about mostly the area where the artisan sheds are. The original plan has raised wood platforms as the walkways. So in compliance with our new accessibility committee, I'm concerned about the stone dust being there instead of some sort of, you know, better, whether it be concrete or wood or something, maybe someone in a wheelchair needs to access that. What do you have to say about that one?
Stone dust, if, if done properly, can be handicapped accessible. It has to be maintained, obviously, or else it could rut out over time. There are other things that can be done to stabilize it even more. Part of the reason behind pulling the boardwalk out is it ended up being a very expensive piece. And because it wasn't part of the core essence of the project, it became something that needed to be sacrificed at that point. The intent is still that the shacks would be, you know, accessible to people with handicaps and disabilities to be able to get to the artisan shacks and, and move around the area. So that piece hasn't been lost on it, but it doesn't have the nicer application of a boardwalk, which would have obviously been a better situation.
And also, Chris, you mentioned about putting the RFP out would probably, would have accessibility be part of that RFP as far as what, wherever that restaurant building would go. I assume it would go, looking at this plan, to the left of the Harbor Master Building, but also would share this walkway all the way down.
It would have to connect up to the existing boardwalk that we built, yes.
So what if the interested investors decided that they wanted to utilize the space where the sheds were, the artisan sheds? Is there a room in this plan if, if an RFP came in and, and the, the investor said, well, we want, we want to use that space?
Short answer is, it could be. It really kind of depends on whether or not the town wants to allow them to use that space. But any design option is possible. They would obviously, in any case, have to abide by Mass Architectural Access Board requirements. They have no choice in that. So it would have to be done excessively. They would have to abide by the flood elevation code requirement, so it would be elevated. So they would have to abide by all the same rules and regulations we would regardless.
Okay, thank you.
Don?
Yeah, several thoughts that, you know, hasn't been said tonight, but there's a really razor-thin contingency in this. I mean, if anything goes wrong, I can't imagine that there's enough money to cover that.
Well, at just, at this stage of the game, a 5% contingency is typically even a little bit more than what you might expect to have. And we're, we're around that, maybe a little bit below it. We've done geotech soil borings, which uncovered the fact that we have poor soils. That's where one of your biggest unknowns will come from. If you do borings and it looks like you have great soil, and understanding that you're poking, you know, holes this big, and you're only doing a few of them, and you have great soils, you could be missing pockets of bad stuff. Our geotech pretty much said we've got bad soils everywhere. So there are no unknowns in that respect. We are doing a deep foundation that's going to account for the bad soils. So that big unknown, which is typically the one that usually trips you up, is what you don't know about what's underground, really isn't so much of a factor here, because we already know what we have is very poor, and we've designed for it. Everything else is engineered. Every project comes along with, you know, a few change orders somewhere along the way, an unknown. But we feel that, you know, in this case where we've done all the due diligence, we've got the soil investigation, we've got all the engineers on board, we feel that it's been minimized and there, we can't see where there are any big ones. So if there are any, we would hope that they'd be small and would definitely fit within the contingency that we're looking at.
I hate to sound cynical, but the Downey property came with a pre-existing problem that supposedly got remediated, pretty much taking the word of the corporation that said they remediated it. So my guess is if there's going to be a problem, that's where it's going to wind up.
And, and we actually did some soil borings in that location, and nothing at all was observed, smelled, detected. Not that they were searching for it, but they, if there was something there to be seen, they would have seen it or smelt it. And they said everything they pulled out was clean, poor soils.
And I, I do think to that point, actually Larry and I were on the phone with the folks from ExxonMobil originally, and they, they did remediate different elements of that site. They said other ones, if you go digging, it may be your responsibility. And I think here, it, the site, the way it's been designed, is we're actually bringing in material. So the only subsurface work that will be done on Downey, and this was done intentionally, so we wouldn't go hunting to find it, is the, the foundation of the garage only. Everything else is basically above.
And, and the reason to that so is their assessment of this is through digging wells, monitoring the groundwater and the water coming through that area. So they know they, and that's, and that's been decreasing pretty much non-detectable. What Chris is pointing to, the caveat is, you don't want to disturb anything that there, kick up a problem. And we're not doing that. There are ways that we won't be digging and kicking that up.
The, the other two things are just observations. The one, response to the discussion about before town meeting, after town meeting, been like 27 town meetings. The way the state law reads about getting the approval of town meeting, at least to me, is that they have the opportunity to see what it is they're giving and what it is they're getting. We have, through the years, tried to get further and further away from that and said, we're going to put an article in there. Yeah, I call it the who the heck ever agreed to that kind of modality, where people are like told eventually, well, you did, because you gave pre-authority to those fine, a bunch of folks in the front of the room that said, trust us, we're going to come back with something really nice. The whole idea of this was that there is a tangible project. You get to see it, you get to agree with it, unless there's a full, flat-out, my hair's on fire emergency, that you really have to move fast. I really advocate that we should have bids in hand, just like the fire department's trying to do, before you go to a town meeting and ask for approval, because nothing good ever comes from trust us. And I have one final thought, and then you can bash me about that last comment. Parking. At least I, I believe that I understand what's transpiring, and it may not be central to this, but I think people need to know it so that we can address it in the future. I understand the Outer Cape Healthcare is trying to count some of the Downey parking spaces as available to them. And if, as, as part of the site plan, and I think if that's the case, we're spending an awful lot of money for, you know, private interests to be able to use the lot. We may want to consider if there's something more we want to consider, do about either restricting or in some manner addressing that. Because, I mean, this is going, if this goes the way everybody seems to want it to go with the restaurant and everything else, it's going to be a lot of people who want to get parking. If those parking lots are being counted twice for different entities.
How can they count, how can they do that?
They can, because the state law allows municipal parking to be counted as part of the site plan if it's available.
I think if you're in close enough proximity, the, the issue, Mr. Chairman, would be that they haven't submitted a site plan yet. If we were to, to submit this and, and get going on it, now it's known what the board's intent is and, and what the design is, and Outer Cape would have to operate within the available parking that, that we generate as a result of our project.
And I don't want to scare anybody, but I mean, if that, if this winds up becoming a problem where we expand the constellation of spaces, but we actually come out of it with fewer spaces, we may want to look into the possibility, which we did look into about 14 years ago, is it create some sort of parking mechanism where there's meterless parking, but people who get permits or stickers for their trailers or for their slips wind up getting parking along with that decal, but everybody else, kind of like what Provincetown does and everybody else, everybody else has to pay something to get into the lot, and it would be self-regulating at that point.
I would say if this isn't known by now, then somebody's not reading any papers.
I agree.
Chris, you guys just mentioned soil borings on the Downey property. What were the soil borings done on the Downey property for? What were the soil borings done on the Downey property for?
It was done because the garage was being placed over there.
Over in that area?
Right, so any, once, once you have a schematic design or a design where you generally know where the buildings are, that, then you, you do the subsurface investigation with the soil borings. So, that you're not absorbing the cost of poking holes all over the site. And you do generally two to three to four borings, either within the footprint, if you can, or generally near it to get a good sampling of what the soils are in that location. So, we did two or three over, either in the footprint or near the footprint of the garage, as well as around the existing Harbor Master Building because we couldn't obviously do it within the footprint.
Can you remind me what the initial bid was after town meeting on this project?
The initial?
So, when we first went out to bid, what did the bid come back at? Because you're saying the project hasn't changed much.
Right, so the bid price all in was, it was just under two point eight. So, it was two million, seven ninety-seven, three thirty-eight.
That's now?
No.
That's what it was.
That's what it, that's what it came in as.
Plus the septic system.
Plus the septic system.
So, what was the three point six number we got hung up on for a while?
That was with the Snack Shack.
It was estimates before.
With the Snack Shack, okay, thank you.
Before the bids.
Okay, so, my concern, Don already alluded to it, two point eight eight million with a hundred and eleven thousand dollar contingency, which also has to pay for the site work. So, less than a four percent contingency, which, if I'm reading correctly, we usually work on about a ten percent contingency, not a five percent contingency. So, you're looking for us to approve this project based on a hundred and eleven thousand dollar contingency and no site work estimates in this packet whatsoever. So, stone dust instead of boardwalks for handicapped accessibility, coming from sheds, coming through the harbor, which you said you're not a fan of. But, saves a lot of money.
Well, it's obviously not the best way to do it, but it's substantially less costly when we were trying to get the project back to the budget.
And I appreciate, I appreciate what you guys have done to get to this point, but I feel, personally, I feel like what we're doing is we're trying to get to a number and we're sacrificing whatever we can sacrifice to get to that number. That's how I feel. Chris, you mentioned at the beginning of this ninety, or John mentioned, sorry, ninety thousand dollars reappropriation in engineering money. Now, if my mind's working correctly, we told the public that that was going to be, anything left in engineering was coming back to them. We got two hundred and fifty thousand, if you read the language of the article that's in the packet, we get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for architect and engineer work. And then we got a grant, and that was supposed to be used for architect and engineer work. We never told the public that we were going to take that and throw it into landscaping. So, are we now being, is it now being proposed that we're going to take ninety thousand dollars of architect money and put it into this project? Because that's new to me tonight, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, ju- just to be clear, the, the design project and the design money, we did, we asked town meeting through free cash for two hundred and fifty thousand. We subsequently received a grant of a hundred and eighty-seven that we had to spend first. So, we spent that money first. That grant and that allocation covered all the design and the inspection to go with the construction. So, we basically have utilized, in accordance with what we had asked town meeting for, that money. There is residual money, ninety thousand. It is my recommendation that that ninety thousand be reauthorized, go back to town meeting and say, we'd like to have that ninety thousand be reauthorized basically for contingency. If we don't need it for contingency, then to be able to do the parking lot.
Okay, so that's my question. So, it doesn't go right now to this project?
No.
So, right now, we're to understand that two point eight eight million is the project, eight 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 million is the project. Less than four percent is the contingency with the septic system. Less than four percent is the contingency and we have no idea what it's going to cost us to do the landscaping or the pavement or whatever we're going to do on the Downey property.
Yeah, that, that's not, I have had some, that's not exactly fair, Mr. Chairman. I have had some discussion with Mr. Hooper to get a sense for if we were to do it.
Well, I'm reading what's in my packet, so if you know more, tell us.
Yeah, no, I did have a discussion with him and I think he would be able to do that project, you know, within that ninety thousand dollar range. The other thing, I mean, obviously, you know, the market is hot and we're paying a price for that. But, we do have several grants that are out. We should hear about those grants. And basically, any grant, or if CPC were to authorize some of the money, I know I didn't recommend it, but if they were to authorize some of the money, we would have more of a contingency. So, ideally, you want as much, you know, contingency as you can. In this circumstance, the award comes with a minimal contingency. The company's been informed of that, that we have minimal dollars. And I actually think from our discussions with them that they have been very creative and willing to look, and as they go into the project, there may be some additional cost savings that can be identified.
I, I appreciate that. I saw it in the letter and certainly a very reputable company, no question. This is not how we normally approach projects. And I do know that from the beginning, this project's been rushed. And it, it seems awfully tight to me. Julie?
I think we also need to though, realize that the grant that we received required the design to exceed normal design expectations. So, I think that the concern on contingency, okay, so if it's normally ten percent, we're at five, we, we've already met some of those concerns because it's been technically overdesigned to meet future flood issues. So, this is a project that's being designed in excess to protect the town in the future. So, I think we need to take that into consideration when you're looking at these numbers. It's, it's pretty important, in addition to the base flood elevation being, you know, at thirteen, I think you said it was?
Eleven for the site, but right next to the velocity, which is at fourteen.
Fourteen, so, I mean, that's in excess. That gives you a better insurance rating. So, there's different contingencies in here that have already been addressed, that you're probably not going to see another problem with that. I'm not saying you won't see any change orders, as they already said. Well, you know, ultimately, you're always going to have some sort of a change order, but ultimately, you've got a company that's saying, we're bidding, we're committed, you know, we'll look for other ways to, you know, do any kind of value for the town. I, I think, you know, you have to take all of those into consideration. This is not your normal project that is meeting the basic requirements, where you may find yourself facing larger contingencies. This is an overdesigned project, meeting all of those technical issues. And then, having the Harbor Masters garage being elevated and, and, you know, landscaped into the section that you won't have to dig to face those problems that we may have if you had to, if they didn't think about those things. So, you're going to raise the grade so you don't address those issues in the ground. So, that's another contingency you can more than likely take out. So, I think, I think you need to look at it all together.
Thank you. Larry, any follow-up?
No, I agree with that. This, especially just in a broad sense that, this is not the beginning of the process, it's at the end. So, it's not a schematic diagram at this point, especially a design that's fairly specific. And so, I don't see a lot of additional activities taking place. You know, a few months ago, I'd be more inclined to worry about the contingency, but they've looked at this several times. So, I feel that, I, I'm comfortable with the contingency base at this time.
Janelle, follow-up?
Thank you, Julie. I appreciate your information because this is your livelihood. This is what you do. It's not what I do, so I'm listening and I'm hearing what you're saying. I would like to know if we were to take out these artisans sheds, which, believe it or not, is the number one thing that I've supported this whole time. But, if we were to put that out for the RFP, for a public-private venture, would that change much in the, in the way of cost? And I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
No, no, that's an easy question to answer. It's actually, the way it sits right now, it's a very minimal part of the project so far as cost. When it was the elevated boardwalk, it had a more significant impact. But, the sheds are not part of the project. Those would be brought in by either the artisans or, we had talked about, donated by local shed companies for advertisement rights and, or something like that. So, we provided power at each of the locations and we provided the walkway. So, it's pretty minimal so far as a current cost impacted project.
Okay. Also, you know, as far as becoming one of the seven cultural towns that we're working with the Mass Cultural Council to become one of seven in the state, when, if we decide to become part of that new network that they're creating, there is grant money available. So, while it's minimal, I would say, let's get rid of that for right now. My two cents.
Don?
I'm just going to take the second time around to reiterate that half of this discussion could have been dispensed with if you go to a town meeting with some solid bids and then you're really looking at approving a tangible product as opposed to a concept that you later may or may not have to back into, so.
Chris, where, Chris, where does the, where does the money come from if this goes over? And town meeting doesn't reappropriate and there's no grants? Where does this money come from?
I mean, we, we can't have it go over. If we don't have the money, then we can't authorize it. But, I do think that, you know, going to town meeting and reauthorizing ninety thousand dollars that was utilized from free cash last year, isn't really that big of an ask. And the other, I mean, you know, it's obviously still early, but hopefully, within sixty days, we'll have a sense for if we land one of these grants. And all what it takes if we land one of these grants is for the board to say yes. And then, this project goes from being tight to being, you know, much more, much more firm. So, you know, it is a little bit of a, a little bit of a risk, but I, I'd hate to delay anymore because we're already talking about getting into, you know, into the voting season to finish this. So, there will have to be some workarounds.
Last question I have is the septic system for the maintenance building. Where is that? Is that part of the two hundred?
It's actually, it's one septic system that's designed for both buildings.
And how's the pipe going to get from one to the other?
It's trenched all the way across the Downey property and tied into the proposed new system.
And wasn't it strongly recommended, Chris, that we don't disturb the ground in between that section and the other section?
Yeah, when he, when he says, when he says trenched, we're, if we bring in eighteen inches of material, then it would be buried within that eighteen inches of material.
So, we won't be digging into the ground?
There will be some digging on the site.
Minimally digging.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion? Of course, I did notice the contract was not signed by Carol Coppola.
Yeah, we will ask Eastward to sign the contract, the AIA documents.
Thought theirs was signed.
And we do have representatives from Eastward here today, so if they want to confirm that and confirm the number, I think they'd be happy to do so.
Let me go back up to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the contract, the agreement made the twentieth day of November two thousand seventeen by and between the party. The first part, the town of Howard, here in called owner, acting herein through its party. The second, Eastward Companies, doing business as Better Trust, located in the town of Chatham, County of Bonstable and State of Massachusetts. Herein called the contractor for the Sacquetucket Landside Project in the amount of two million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Yeah, with the, with the proviso that a value engineering adjustment would be made to that in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven, seven oh five for the revised total of two million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-three. Said documentation to follow.
Thank you.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the motion as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Thank you. Forty-one, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Selectmen proposed, uh, no. All right, Chris. Next up CPC, capital outlay recommendations by town administrator and general discussion.
Yeah, just, I don't know, maybe I'm just tired or I, I don't remember how far I got last time or if we didn't go too far last time. I, I thought I did go through this, but.
If we do one at a time, Chris, is your list of priorities to CPC and then let the board chime in? I know Julie had some questions this week on the library project. I've got some questions on the housing authority.
So, you want to focus on CPC ones?
Yeah.
Okay. So, with, with that being, the COC did go through and did weigh in on the free cash ones, did not, did not weigh in on the elements of CPC, except in some circumstances, which I'll, I'll point out. So, as you go through the, and just folks that may be looking at this at home, and I'll try to relay this so they don't have to have a sheet in front of them, but just, I'll kind of alphabetically go through the various projects and the funding source I will focus. Just one comment on the funding source, on the two point seven. The, each year, there's a allocation that's made and that goes into a bucket and retains in that bucket until it's expended. So, the, the buckets for the amount available, and that is subject to change. I think that was a good comment that was made. Undesignated is one million, open space is three hundred and forty-six thousand, historic five sixty-one, and then housing, seven forty-one. So, you can see as an example in that housing, that's been built up for several years and not fully expended. So, I just want to make sure it is ten percent, but it has to be kept in that bucket. So, with that as a, a little bit, let me get into it. Administration, we had put in for one item, which is Alborough House, for a, in a status assessment for twenty-five hundred. I think the idea behind this is to, the board has asked in past years, previous boards, about if we're going to do something with Alborough House, what makes sense to do and if we're going to invest in a project for the long term, we should get a sense for the long-term viability of that property. So, we, we do have a quote of twenty-five hundred dollars, not a quote, but an estimate of twenty-five hundred to come in and look at that. I did, if you look on the end under the notes, I think when we do that study, it would be good to get an assessment. We're not going to get too much beyond what Sean Libby has already done, to be perfectly honest, but we will get an assessment on the building. And one of the things that if, if this building were to be considered for affordable housing, considering it was a house at one point, that, that assessment would have to be a little bit different. And quite simply, it's a matter of, it does have a bathroom and it has the, the shower has been disconnected to the bathtub because it's obviously, right now, and since I've been here, used as office, light office use is probably what it's used as. So, that is the, the first request.
So, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what's the end of that discussion? Is twenty-five hundred gets us nowhere?
Just gets us an assessment, that's all.
But, it doesn't contribute to, doesn't help answer any of the questions you raised? And we'd have to go back after this? I'm trying to figure out the purpose of this, if it's not going to get us to an answer of.
It's a good question. You know, this was originally a board concept. So, I wish I could say it was my concept, but it's not my concept. So, I'm trying to relay a history lesson from the board. But, my sense of what the board wanted was to do an assessment and I guess, for instance, if the foundation was going to crumble.
So, this is just a general overview, then it'll come back next year if we see some potential?
Yeah, the idea would be to do an assessment this year and then decide what the longer-term use would be and the more substantial construction requests or design requests would come back.
Okay, I was just.
And I, and I would hope this would show us, you know, if the foundation's going to cave in, the assessment will show us the foundation's going to cave in. We couldn't propose a house.
I just got lost on.
I think we'll get that.
It seems like a little money that wasn't clearly going to get anywhere.
It's one of the management expectations for twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
All set?
Yeah. Okay, I'll keep working my way. Cemeteries, Mount Pleasant Cemetery, in, just in terms of, I will say what my recommendation, so my recommendation did include funding that. On the Mount Pleasant Cemetery gravestone conservation, that's historic. The historic bucket actually had, it has more money than it has requests. So, I think it's important to know that. So, when I did priority, I did priorities, prioritization kind of based upon buckets, which bucket that we allocate for. So, that was forty-seven, forty-seven thousand. So, I did recommend that, that the funding source would be the historic bucket.
Anytime a board member has a question on this, just chime in.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep going until you say.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So, I just, I just want to make sure that people understand too that, you know, that the library project, I, from my understanding, is that there was some question as to the type of, you know, paint stripping that they needed to have.
We haven't gotten to the library yet.
Yeah, let me, when we get to the library.
Oh, I was jumping ahead, sorry.
Do you have any problem with the cemetery?
No, I have no problem with the cemetery.
You had to be nervous. I wasn't going to be able to answer about cemeteries, so. Only go so far.
She must've got outta here.
On the, on the community center, under CPC historic, is the construction of public record storage. So this would actually be building, uh, out some of the basement to put records in. I was reading some of the material that was provided, and I thought it was interesting, if you're gonna do a project where you preserve records, you should have a place to put 'em safely, which I, I thought that made a lot of sense. Which is what we're trying to do here. The basement of this building is, suffice to say, is not a good vehicle for.
So no, no comments from the boards can indicate that you support it, okay?
Yeah, I, if I may, one question. So the, uh, record of stories, that's in this building, is in the community center?
Community center.
It's at the community center.
Community center request.
Out of this building?
Out of this building, into the community.
Right, that's why I thought we were going by this one.
Downstairs is closer to a dungeon than it is to a, uh, basement. On, uh, conservation, this one is on the preservation of Judah Eldridge property. Uh, this was funded in two different ways, and just the way the buckets worked and, and the way available funds were. Uh, so CPC, I'm sorry, um, the, the, uh, capital outlay committee did vote in, in favor of this with the allocation of, it's three hundred and sixty-nine thousand for the project, uh, three hundred and nineteen thousand coming from open space, uh, and fifty thousand coming from free cash. So Judah Eldridge, and this is, is funded in this plan.
And I just wanna point out that the, last week, we met on this in executive session, we did again tonight, and the board has unanimously supported, uh, passing this, so.
All set?
Yep.
The next one is on, uh, conservation, the, the Eldridge slash Cornelius Pond property. This is just the acquisition of a conservation restriction, so, uh, the idea would be HCT, Howard Conservation Trust, would own it, and we would just have the conservation restriction. Uh, the amount that is estimated on that is two hundred thousand. Under the CPC, uh, funding is available in, out of two buckets, twenty-five thousand from open space and a hundred and seventy-five thousand from undesigned. Again, I broke some of these up just because of the way the buckets unfolded. The next item is under engineering, uh, the Pleasant Lake Avenue Crossing Lights, that's twenty-seven thousand. That would come from undesigned slash recreation, and I do have that recommended, recommended as a priority to be funded.
You have a chance. Let him start.
On, uh, library preservation, on the library preservation, um, I just wanna, uh, we, it is, the request is three hundred thousand. If the bucket is from historic, as I indicated, the bucket does have sufficient money to fund the full three hundred thousand. I, I know one question that came up, uh, was why three hundred thousand? Uh, we did go out to bid on this project, uh, twice, and I believe from, uh, my conversations with, uh, Mr. Libby, which I haven't had recent discussions with him, but the reason why he chose three hundred thousand is you take the amount of money that's available, which I think is four seventy-five in that neighborhood, plus the three hundred thousand, and that would actually match the amount we needed in the bid to do the work. So that is a, a number that is based upon, uh, an actual bid that we received, uh, that at the time, uh, we did not, uh, move forward with because we lacked sufficient funds.
Julie, go ahead.
So in, in terms of the, the, these monies in the library, my understanding is, is maybe some confusion as to whether or not, you know, this, the stripping of the paint is required.
Yeah, just.
And, and it's not something that, that they can waver on. It is part of the, the fact that it's a historical building, and that comes mandated because it's a national historic register place, and they have to follow the state's guidelines, and that's what they've been told to do, is that paint stripping is necessary. And, and I think also the question about whether or not they had a maintenance plan going forward. And my understanding is that some of that, their maintenance monies are already in the budget for, you know, I, I think it's under DPW's budget, is that right?
Yes, we, uh, consolidated under facility maintenance.
So they have, uh, you know, well, library has gone through this, as you know, a couple times around, and the building really needs to be painted very badly. They're trying to find all, follow all the stipulations that have been handed to them. So I don't understand that there should be any confusion on CPC's part, and why that they would be requesting these monies and why it should be funded.
I, I do think to that point, only because I, I have been out extra nights to come in and, uh, to do this. And I, I think that there is, you know, CPC isn't gonna fund or shouldn't fund just straight maintenance projects. So if we were gonna come in and put another coat of paint on, then it's probably not a viable project.
Right.
And we also went to the historic committee to, or historic district, to kinda get a, a sense for, okay, what do you do if you wanna preserve the building, which I believe preservation falls within CPC.
Right.
And falls within historic, and in that case, the recommendation was to strip the paint off, get down to the bare wood, and then apply new paint, because the new paint will hold better to the, to the bare wood. So there is some, I don't know, I wanna say legal elements, if you would, of making sure that we're doing preservation to stay within CPC guidelines and not just routine maintenance.
But I thought that I read.
That's what this project does.
Yeah.
Is preservation.
Because I did think that when I read through all those CPC materials, they specifically even cited that themselves. That, you know, is, these are histori, if there are historical attributes of a town, and they're, you know, on the natural historic registered district, blah, 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 that they, certain things have to be followed. So it's, it's in their own information, too.
Jenny, you wanna add something?
Yes, Jenny Hewitt, Library Director. Um, yes, the project was reviewed actually by the Mass Historical Commission several years ago, and they found it consistent with Department of Interior standards and, you know, verified that it is historic pres- preservation. I don't think that was the question. I think one of the questions, I wasn't at the CPC meeting, but I watched the recording, and, um, I think one of the issues might have been, was there a, um, is there a plan to maintain? Like, when will this happen again? This is a hundred-year project. Um, after a hundred years, the building needs to be chemically stripped. One part of the building's a hundred and thirty-seven years old, and one is a hundred and sixty-two years old. So, um, so we won't be asking for another eight hundred thousand for hopefully a hundred years. Um, but we have had for decades an annual maintenance program, um, painting a part of the building every year. And I'm wondering if there was some confusion there, that that money has gone from, it was probably three thousand when I started, and it was four thousand for many years. It was up to seven thousand five hundred when it transferred into highways, um, DPW's budget. And so there, there's no intention to take that away. The addition has to still be painted every year, right? So we'll be doing that for a few years, and then get to the part that gets done in this project. Um, so every part of it will, that will continue on. That's what I wondered if they wanted, um, some assurance that, that, that money was still gonna be there.
So Jenny, I would hope that you would put that to CPC, not us.
Sure, but one, one question they did have was, um, initially, we had planned to put the project out to bid again this fall, so we would have a definite number, um, you know, as we go through this process of trying to get funding. But, um, Sean Libby checked with, had Bob Cafarelli check with the Attorney General's Office, and they said, no, you cannot go out to bid if the town does not have the funding. The town needs to be able to sign a contract within thirty days of the close of the bid. And, um, if you can't do that, which we can't, 'cause we don't have the, all the funds, um, you can't go out to bid. So the earliest we could have a firm price for town meeting would be, I believe, April ninth, so it's thirty days.
And I don't wanna cut you off, but.
Well, so that's a question, though, I.
For us.
There was a debate at the meeting. Some of the people thought, and that's a question I hear it talked about with a lot of projects. Is that true or not, and where can we get this in writing, that we cannot go out to bid until, uh, if we don't have the funding for thirty days?
There's two, two elements in there. One, one element is when you, in the charter, we have a requirement, I think, that says by February, we're supposed to get bids, and so there, there's a charter requirement, but in the procurement world, you know, there, there is a requirement that you can't just get a bid and then hold it forever. So the guideline, and I think it is a guideline, I, I don't, I, I've been through procurement class several times, that you have thirty days. You can put sixty or ninety days on there. The bids will probably be a little bit higher because you created a little bit higher level of volatility on, on the materials that people have. So we would have to time it out and, and see if we could time it where we get the bids as close to town meeting as possible, and then try to do the work, um, you know, in, in July. One of the things about this project, a- as I remember with Mr. Libby, is this paint, and the paint stripping is very temperature sensitive. So you almost want to do it in, in a time where you can kinda guarantee that the, the weather's gonna be nice. So you wouldn't wanna do it in the, obviously, in the spring or fall, and that means doing work in the summer, which, in Cape Cod, is a little bit of a challenge.
Thank you. My, you know, my point really is, I, I've heard what CPC didn't do last year and the guidelines, but I also heard last year that CPC, and I'm not speaking to the library, requested information from, for certain projects, and they didn't get it. And what I'm trying to do here is to make sure that they get what they're asking for. They need everything that they're asking for ahead of when they make these decisions, so anything that you can get, I would suggest passing it along to CPC. And anything you need from Chris, Chris will get. Anything else on the library?
No.
What's the total cost of the project? I know money was appropriated last year as well.
Yeah, I, I think four seventy-five sticks in my head as available, plus the.
We have a previous appropriation, and all the other we have five twenty-nine, um, we're asking for three hundred thousand.
Thank you.
So the, you have eight hundred.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. The next one I have, uh, is the, uh, project, the CPC, uh, grant for ADA accessibility on the boardwalk. Uh, we would get that out of, or potentially, that would be something that would be qualified, I think, to fund out of undesigned or recreation. I think that's what they put it in under. Uh, I did not recommend that to be funded, it's quite simply, the, the money ran out. So I, I, and part of my rationale is, as you can see on the form, we do have, uh, the reauthorization of, uh, reauthorization of prior appropriation at ninety thousand, and we do have additional grants that are pending. Thank you. The next is, let me see, natural resources on, uh, Hinckley's Pond. Did I do Hinckley's Pond under conservation? No, I didn't do it under conservation. The Hinckley's Pond project would be, um, six hundred thousand. I did make a mistake on that. I, I recorded the, uh, information from Heinz incorrectly. Heinz had the number of six hundred thousand. Uh, that funding would be for the alum treatment on the Hinckley's Pond. I think it is important to realize that the Hinckley's Pond is part of a river, uh, part of a pond system. So Long Pond, which is more upstream, was done, and Hinckley's is next, and it feeds ultimately into, I think, the Herring River.
Right.
So we have issues with the Herring River. Uh, so, you know, it is something that is part of the overall plan for the CWMP, Comprehensive Water Management Plan. So that's six hundred thousand for the alum treatment, which grabs the nitrogen and floats it to the bottom, is six hundred thousand. Under this plan, four hundred and fifty thousand would come from open space and undesigned. And then free cash would fund a hundred and fifty thousand. Because it had a free cash component to it, the, uh, capital outlay committee did vote, uh, in favor of that. The, the next component, and we originally had this in at a hundred and fifty, and after discussion with, uh, Sean Libby, uh, the, uh, a, uh, area to kind of put the bikes, uh, bike racks, to have some kind of pavilion. Uh, the pavilion across the street at, uh, Brooks Park was about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. And then to do the stairway down is about twenty-five to thirty thousand. So I thought seventy-five would give him sufficient. That number, a- and I think it's important to say this, that that number doesn't include labor. We would do the labor out of DPW. So we decrease that cost and increase the certainty by having DPW do the work and just buy the materials.
Uh, just one correction, there's, uh, we got an option on our mind, but it's removing phosphorus.
Thank you, Larry. Do you know?
So those are separate?
Yes.
Okay.
It's two different funding boxes, but. Obviously, my recommendation is we gotta clean the pond, so doing the recreation. We don't wanna guide people down to a place where they can then get hurt if we have another algae bloom. We had one this year, so. On the, let me see, where am I? So I, I think I go down to the, uh, the Housing Trust, under the, uh, under planning, the Housing Trust, two hundred and ninety-five. Uh, this again was, uh, a number originally requested five hundred was to kinda put the money. So if there's an opportunity, if the Housing Trust is formed, it's an agency that if it has money, then it can quickly react to projects. So it would be an element to be able to quickly react to projects. And we have had some discussions with, uh, neighboring towns about funding potentially thirty, thirty thousand to forty thousand dollars for the, uh, housing coordinator to have the four towns share that, uh, effort.
Mr. Chair. Don.
Yeah, just as a comment, uh, to reiterate, uh, I, I would think that that's a really high priority for the board because it actually gets beyond the housing committee and gets to the point where you can make decisions and start doing things and getting people in the houses.
Larry?
Well, I certainly agree with that, and, and I would further state that, uh, hiring a housing coordinator would do us no good if we have no resources to help out.
Right.
And so we wanna be careful to get the trust and money in there, then make it functional.
And then the board of selectmen can also give land, um, along with this.
That'd be perfect, yeah.
Sign land to and have money to use it.
Yeah.
I know on this, Chris, you have people going to the, um, CPC meeting on this from other towns, I believe.
Yeah, actually, I, I think CPC made an official request, uh, separately to have, uh, the folks that did the presentation to you from Yarmouth, uh, do a presentation. So I know they're slotted, and then, uh, myself, probably, and then some staff will, will provide some assistance.
I know on this one, we have, there is, uh, several people, you mentioned earlier, there's more requests for housing than there is funds.
Yes, and I do kind of address that. I, I went a little bit beyond my scope to talk about other projects that are not town. Ninety percent of the ones submitted were town, so, and I'll comment on those at the, uh, at the end.
Okay.
In a positive way.
Thank you, Chris.
On the recreation, there was a submission for Brooks Park, Phase Five Comprehensive Lighting Plan, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred, uh, funded out of undesigned slash recreation. So that is contemplated to be funded. Under the town clerk, on the records retention, uh, the piece for town hall, which would be culling through the records. We obviously don't wanna move records over that aren't needed to be moved. That culling process is forty thousand dollars. Uh, so that is contemplated to be, uh, requested, or within the funding plan. And then the, the three at the bottom of the sheet, which are, uh, non-town, private, uh, the CDP, the Community Development Partnership, the people that just put on that Cape Housing Institute, which I attended all six nights. I thought it was very educational. A challenge, maybe a bigger challenge than I was hoping it would be, but a bigger challenge. Uh, but that, they asked for ten thousand, so under this plan, it does contemplate to be funded. And then on Habitat for Cape Cod, I think it is an important project, uh, that they've done in terms of there hasn't been a lot of housing activity to the point of actually building houses to put people in. And the two projects that have been done have both been related to Habitat, so this is three hundred thousand. That is, uh, funded within this, uh, allocation. And then the Howard Housing Authority, who came in not too long ago, did their presentation. Uh, I believe they said it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand to do a buy-down, one buy-down, uh, and then ten thousand to run the lottery and the other, uh, related activities to that. So I funded that at the a hundred and thirty-five to allow them to do one. I, I was concerned, at least, uh, I think you asked the question, Mr. Chairman, of when was the last time that they had funds? They had seventy-five thousand allocated in two thousand twelve, and they had used leftover funds, uh, from, I think, two thousand eight to do that. And, and to leave four hundred thousand on the books for an extended period is just not something I think makes a lot of sense.
I'd comment on that as well. I mean, the, um, the request for four hundred thousand for three home buy-downs, um, which would be open to the entire state.
Right.
Seems to make no sense when we can do some local initiative programs. I'm, I'm finding it hard to believe that they would come in for four hundred thousand. I would also say that it's, um, you know, the chair of that committee happens to be the strongest opponent to the Habitat project in, uh, West Howard. And to be voting and, and pushing a agenda for competing funds, um, seems ethically wrong to me, but. The other, the other thought here, Chris, is we could, I mean, you know, in hopes the housing trust gets made, and then CPC looks at giving the housing money yearly into the bucket of the housing trust, and then the housing trust would allocate to local initiative, to housing. And then the Housing Trust would allocate to local initiative, to Housing Authority, rather than them having to make that decision yearly, correct?
Yes, and I do think, just to, to, part of the rationale as to why have administration take this on is that, you know, I, I think that, at least from my perspective, uh, I, I'm sympathetic that the Housing, you know, Authority probably tried. I think some of these part-time housing groups have tried. And, and I think putting the onus on administration to kind of work, that's what Yarmouth did. And Yarmouth has proven that, that's a good model and, and it works. So it means more work for me, but I think, uh, I got into this business to, to kind of help people and make sure that we're addressing dire needs. And I think the one thing I walked away is, it really is dire needs and, and now is the time to, to start doing something.
Thank you, Chris. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, it's no secret, I've been involved with HSH for over fifteen years. And there have been buy downs through the years. The, the one, I mean, there's a number of things that I would hope that they understand, but this leads me to not feel this is as high a priority in general, regardless of who's proposing it. You buy down a house, first of all, that doesn't change, uh, the eighty percent of the median income requirement. So they've, they've got what they've got. You're putting them in something that you're buying down, so presumptively is, is there something else going on? It's either in a better area or it's got more square footage. Uh, they still have to operate the household and heat it, uh, and put electricity into it. And just as important, buying it down doesn't change what the assessors believe it is relative to, as a value to other houses. So again, you're, the nut doesn't go down to live in it. Uh, I, I just get concerned when you're talking about a buy down program, that you're not setting someone up for failure to actually not be able to live there within the constraints of their income. In addition to the fact that you're not really spreading out, I mean, for that kind of money, Habitat was putting six people, uh, in the houses. So overall, is it valid to do this kind of thing? Yeah, but competing against some of the other things we're talking about, is that the highest priority?
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, those are good points that everyone's making. I, I have a bit of a different take that if, if we go to the town administrator, possibly it could give us more flexibility to help those people out. That maybe now it's standard a hundred and twenty-five, and maybe someone needs twenty-five to go over hump and get into the house. And we can spread that money further and make it more individually friendly. You know, it'll take a little more time, but maybe we can help those people out and that aren't, won't fall in that trap because they're almost there, but they can't make the payment.
So I'd like to, I'd like to, like to see this continue in that aspect. I'm not arguing against it, but that's how it used to happen.
Yeah.
It, it was like try to spread it around in, in a way that if you just need a little bit more to get into a house, uh, and we can help. And we'll put the deed restriction on it and it helps people in perpetuity then.
Thank you. Julie?
Somewhat related to that was what we heard discussed, you know, last week about looking at, um, changing the percentage of CPC funds, um, which P-Town has done. Um, I think Yarmouth did that as well. I mean, so they have more money going into the bucket for the longer term and, and I think the trust allows us more flexibility.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I did ask that question at, at that. And you can't change the law to go above the ten percent. But what, uh, Mr. Coburn there had said is that what, uh, P-Town had done was that they said it would be the, the Will of Town Meeting to allocate, I don't remember what, their, their number was actually pretty high.
Yeah.
I want to say it came up close to fifty, I think, in total. So maybe even forty percent more. Um, not something I think we would go that high. But he said at least the Will of Town Meeting, if they want to make more concerted effort towards housing, that they would encourage that dedication of that additional percentage to housing.
And in fairness, Mr. Chair, as a historic perspective, uh, because, I mean, I go back a long time with that, too. It's like, uh, Provincetown had the National Seashore there. They, they really didn't have the opportunity to buy a heck of a lot of open space. Even when we had the land bank, they were begging to try to divert some of that to housing. That was the biggest, uh, need that they had. It wasn't just merely that they just wanted to get into that. There wasn't a lot of property to buy to protect. And by the way, the National Seashore had protected an awful lot of acreage.
Thank you. Anything else on that? Well, Seth?
Just, uh, on the, I realized that on the folks at home that may be watching, uh, that when you go through these amounts, I, it's indicated it was two point seven million dollars that's available. Uh, the, the numbers, if you total them up, were two point six million. So actually, in the historic bucket, we leave a hundred thousand in there because there weren't enough requests and you can't just move that. Uh, but in that case, we, we stayed within the, uh, the budgeted allocation. If additional monies are to go in, it is a rolling receipt of, of revenue, then that, you know, these recommendations can be changed. And obviously, all this is, uh, actually CPC makes the choice. And then ultimately, Town Meeting has to decide whether they're going to vote it or not.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Well, Seth, if it's okay with the board, I want to move H up, Community Center hours of operation for holidays and Sundays. There's a few people here for that, so. Janelle, you asked for this to be on the agenda?
Okay.
Run.
I know, right? So, uh, during my time as selectman, I have fielded many, 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 many complaints that the community center is not open as often as, for instance, the Chatham one. And that it follows more of a Town Hall schedule and therefore there are less hours for people of all ages. But of course, I hear it from parents of children, uh, to utilize the facility. And I live right behind it, so my kids utilize it as much as possible. And last Christmas vacation, I believe it was open two and a half days out of a ten-day vacation. So it was kind of a bummer and, um, you know, it's of no, to no fault of anybody. It's just that we, as a town, need to figure out how to fund to keep it open. Chatham Rec currently, I asked today, um, they are open Monday through Saturday, eight AM to nine PM. Sundays, one to five PM. And soft holidays such as Veterans Day or whatnot, one to six PM. Um, I do know the Barnstable Rec is also open quite a bit. I did not get their hours. But so that, I want to have a discussion about how can we fund, um, the hours there. Uh, I think what we need to find out is a custodian and a front desk person. And of course, we'll ask Carolyn, she's the director over there, what needs to hap, who needs to be there in the building to keep it open? And then figure out a solution so that we can have a space, a safe, warm space for our kids and seniors and to member, uh, would like to utilize the community center.
I did get an email from Lee Culver, who's the direct, uh, the Chairman of the, um, Facilities Committee. Uh, he couldn't be here tonight. He wished he could, but he couldn't be here. Chris, I think really this falls, it's a budget issue, correct?
Yeah, I, I think, um, I had the opportunity to kind of ride around with a little bit with Larry today. You know, the, the board has set a budget message of no additional hours, no additional, you know, expenses. So a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about, you know, a grant administrator and, you know, I think that if we're going to do additional hours, we can certainly go through and, and come up with what those numbers will be. I mean, no problem with that, keeping it open Sunday, one to five. But, you know, I guess I'm trying to figure out, you know, where is the board? You know, the, the budget message was very clear. And, you know, does the board want to, to waver from that? And I, I don't say it in a bad way, but if you want me to research things, I guess I need to know what I'm going to research. And then what I've been doing just budgetarily, you know, it's hard to take a sixty million dollar budget with, you know, thousands of lines and plug and take it out too many times. So I can certainly have those numbers plugged in as an enhancement of service. And then if the numbers aren't there and the board wants to, to pull it, certainly that's within, you know, the purview of the board. But I just, I guess I'm looking for some direction because I've kind of given the message to staff. We've delivered your budget message for not only my message, but also the board's message. And, you know, what do you want me to do? What, what prioritization do you want me to set? Or, I mean, it was, I think it was unanimously voted, Mr. Chair, the, the, the budget mes, the budget message that the board had. So I guess I'm just looking for some guidance. Happy to do the exercise, but I don't really want to do the exercise if it's just for exercise's sake.
First, I'd like to thank you for listening to the budget message. And I hope everybody else does. With that said, uh, you know, last year, I remember at Budget Time, looking at a line item for potential additional hours in the Health Department, and it was roughly four thousand dollars. You know, last week, we learned about a ten thousand dollar expense for the treasure chest. Tonight, we talked about, um, three million or so for the harbor, plus the seven million that the, that, that we appropriated last year for the harbor. And on and on and on and on. So I've been, being very familiar with budgets myself, what I'd like to see at least is for you to look at the budget, for you to look at areas where it might come. But more importantly, to know what this, what it requires. Does it require a janitor? Does it require a, one employee? Does it require a second employee? And, and like any number of things that we've discussed, um, tonight, you know, one thing we're going to discuss is holiday hours, uh, as recommended or, uh, what other towns are doing. You know, Janelle just gave us, uh, Chatham. And I do know some parents that have approached me lately and said that they don't use the Harwich Rec programs. They go to Chatham, said they're cheaper, they're more convenient, and they go over there. So without the knowledge and without knowing where we stand in comparison, I couldn't make a decision. So I'd like to see the exercise happen. Janelle, you had your hand up?
I was just going to say, um, I had a previous discussion, I think maybe two years ago, uh, with our Rec Department, with Eric, who at that time, and I don't know what his position is now, but at that time, thought perhaps if he, if the gym was available on Mon, on Sundays, rather, that he could actually run, uh, fee programs like he does with, uh, other contractors, subcontractors who run programs. Um, and that could potentially fund the staffing. So, you know, where there's, there's always a solution. That's, that's kind of what I've learned in life. There's always a solution. So you just got to try to find where the money can come from. The ten thousand dollars at the treasure chest is definitely on my radar. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, so, yeah, that's all.
Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This problem went back to the original pitch for the community center. It's like, it's not going to cost you any more than what you're already spending. And the problem is it was never addressed. There was never a pro forma of how to operate it. Well, I had colleagues back in the early two thousands when Chatham was looking at theirs. I said, if you can do anything to fix what we didn't do, look at a pro forma operating budget about what that would look like to get the thing up and running and actually in use. So it's nobody's fault, especially Carolyn's. I mean, nobody gave any money for this.
Right.
And they expect, and the problem that I saw then is still the same problem. Wrecking youth is not the community center building, although it could be a mechanism with a paid program to help augment their funds. But it misses the point that they also do soccer and flag football and all kinds of other things that are not sourced in the building. Uh, they're, they're not a slave to the building. They're, they're part, one of the users of it and maybe one of the solutions for operating it. But we've never stepped up to the plate in, in a meaningful way to give them any money to be able to keep the place open. So there could be creative things. All I do know is I grew up years and years ago in a log cabin.
Dirt roads?
Yeah, dirt roads.
I love Don. He's what makes me feel young.
And I walked to school ten miles each way uphill.
In the snow.
In the snow, even in July. Uh, and, and I know that my grandmother was a matron, uh, in Westchester County, uh, for Tibbetts Brook Park. It was not a free facility. If you go to the YMCA, it's not a free facility. If we're really serious about this in a bigger, in a bigger way, even than just one holiday or, or another, we should be looking at, what are the, what does everybody really want? And how much are you willing to pay for it outside of the tax base if you're going to be using it? As opposed to, hey, you built the building and I, I live here, so let me go to the building. It's not fair because you can't operate anything that way. You want it to be free forever.
Thank you. Chris?
I do, um, just one of the things to that point, I, I think it's a great point, that the original policy was to build a building. We didn't need to staff it, which was kind of unrealistic. And, you know, one of the things since I've been here is that you look and, and we have coverage for custodians where there's only a custodian of the building at certain times. And then there's somebody there that's a custodian and you need the custodians to kind of set up and move the, move the different, uh, rooms around so when we have functions. And then you really should have a reception person, someone to be there. And we have blocks of time where we don't. And in last year's budget, we actually did take some of the, uh, the waitroom fees and, and repurpose those to kind of help with some of the hours. I mean, we are also challenged because we're taking some of those hours and trying to get some staff in the cultural center. So I, I think, you know, I'm happy to go through and let's see, uh, what would the additional cost be? And we'll try to keep it as minimally as possible to do a Sunday from one to five. But we still have areas where we potentially should backfill. And I will call over to Chatham and, and Barnstable and talk to my counterparts to see if there's any creative financing that they've done that, that I'm not aware of. But, you know, I just, I applaud Carolyn. I mean, I thought last year to have most of that money that we used wasn't taxpayer money. It was actually waitroom fees that we were actually re, we were able to reallocate for the attendant.
Julie?
So I think that it's, you know, it would be great if it was open on holidays and such, you know, because there, it is something for kids to do and just have someplace to go. But I'm wondering if, if we can kind of combine those and maybe sort of do a trial where we say, okay, so let's just say this coming Christmas vacation, or maybe that's too soon. But if it's not, see what the interest is, right? And so maybe you, you say to families, hey, you know, for, and I'm just making up a number, you know, for ten bucks for the week, you can, we'll have the community center open. We need to know how much interest there is. You know, ten bucks a kid for the week or something reasonable that shows you how many kids want to come there? How many kids will use it? Is it worthwhile? And then you kind of can draw from there to see. Maybe that's, maybe that's another program that's offered then on the vacations. It's not, you know, they can come and play basketball or go do whatever. And for ten, ten bucks, twenty bucks, whatever, for the week, maybe that will start to self-fund. Larry's the thought.
Well, I recognize, uh, Chris's dilemma. He's right. He did bend my ear on this on the way, uh, to Boston today. But I also, uh, uh, think we can't make a hard, absolute decision unless we know what the facts are. What it's going to cost and what it's going to be. And I think even if we make a decision now, it should be temporary. And we should, uh, look in the next year's budget of re-looking at all the, uh, what are concrete plans, especially if we could bake it from new hires. We've hired, I think, ten people in the last several years in a time when we were talking about having flat budgets. And I think we need to be careful, uh, re-looking at, at these hires, you know? Technology's increasing all the time. Uh, regionalization is, is helping us out, Cape Cod Commission. And so I, I want to look at, but I also want to put that in the calendar to reassess, uh, where we're going labor-wise. Because we, we have kept, you know, the cultural center's the latest, especially the latest one we've added in recent. You know, those are priorities, and how do we handle it?
Good evening.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Bud Brackett, um, speaking as parent, um, coach, police officer, um, jack of all trades in the town. First of all, I'd like to say that, um, you know, I'm also a cad, card-carrying member of the Carolyn Carey Fan Club and Eric Beebe Fan Club. They've, every time, opportunity I get to, to thank them and commend them for everything they've done for, uh, for my programs, I want to take that opportunity to do so. So nothing I'm going to say is an indictment by any means on them. I do want to say that I am a firm advocate in trying to come up with any opportunity that we can to have that community center open on Sundays and on holidays. It's a tremendous asset in the town. It sits there and have that sit there empty and have kids running around the streets of the town and not have someplace to go instead, I think is a disservice to the, to the youth in the community. So any opportunity that we can, um, gymnasiums are a huge asset on Cape Cod. I get asked all the time as part of my program, other youth groups from other towns asking for any idea where they could get gym space and availability of space. It's an asset there for rental, for whatever. Other programs that can, uh, that could come into the town or start in the town, any other youth programs that looking to start up. There's no gymnasiums available other than the schools for them to use, and the schools come with a significant cost on that. There's a lot of working parents. There's a lot of kids that are involved in school groups. Um, there's a lot of youth that are involved in activities at school that are during, that are held during the week. And by having the gymnasiums open and the rec center, uh, the rec center, uh, open on the weekends and Sundays, gives a lot more flexibility to parents and kids to choose what activities they're going to do in town. I do know, you know, uh, my son's involved in theater at the school. That's something that's done after school's in there. He's not able to participate in certain sports activities if he wants to choose theater, uh, because they can't do both at the school. So by- So, by having the opportunity to have, um, programs that are, are open and available on the weekends, gives the kids opportunity to do both. They don't have to sit there and have to decide which activity they're gonna do. And I think it just gives the town a lot more flexibility to offer programs to the youth. Um, and I think that the, it would be, uh, a benefit to the town to have, come up with any kind of thing, working with, uh, the community center, uh, Carolyn, Eric. I understand, I know there's, you know, there's, it's not, it's easier said than done. There's collective bargaining issues with janitors and custodians and, and, and everything, but I think, uh, I think it's, uh, something that everybody needs to come down and sit at a table and come up with a solution with, and, uh, I, I just think it's a tremendous benefit. And to have it sit there closed, I think doesn't do anybody any good.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Joanne Brown. I'm a library trustee, but I, I'm also a member of the Friends of the Council on Aging. And when Janelle started to talk about this topic, she talked about the fact that the, the community center was only open two and a half days over last Christmas vacation. The senior center, the Council on Aging, is affected by the hours of the community center all, also. And looking at how the holiday falls this year, there's a potential that the commu- that the COA could be closed for five days, too. And that's something to think about also. That's all I wanna say.
Well done.
Okay, I'm Lisa Butler, and my, I have a lot of kids, and the community center is definitely something that, um, for the whole time of them growing up, it's been an issue because on vacations, when you're looking for things, especially like for your, I remember when they were like six and seven, and there's not a lot of things to do in the winter, and you wanna just bring them down. It's not open. And it was hard to get in doing sports programs. We're not able to utilize the community center and looking for times in the, um, specifically for us, for the basketball programs. Um, but now, as the kids are older, for my son who's a senior this year, they all go to Chatham. The, it's free, it's open a lot, and we live, you know, three minutes from the community center. But yet, he'll drive twenty minutes to get into Chatham to go there. I think that there are definitely things that we could be doing as far as, um, Hyannis, you brought up Hyannis. They do have memberships that they do for the year, so they have their, their annual resident membership is twenty dollars, um, per person, which, I mean, it's, that sounds crazy to me, it's twenty dollars, but if you think about all the kids, if, you know, when my kids were in first, second, third grade, and it was a, a little checkbox, like, you know, twenty dollars in your kids, like, the community center would be open, all these expanded hours. I would pay the twenty dollars to know that I could bring my kids there on vacations and everything. I mean, that would generate a lot of revenue if, if that's one of the issues. Another issue is, at the community center itself, I think it's really, people can rent rooms and pretty much run businesses out of them. I think that should be addressed to increase those fees for people who are profitizing off of using the rooms. That would offset some charges as far as for janitors and staff. Do you have anything else that you'd like to say? I mean, and I know, and I'm not saying that my kid does it, but... I would just say, I think that there's a lot of things that could be done because it's a shame to have this amazing building in our town, and we have kids that should be able to use it, and anybody really, but I'm, I'm here as a parent of five kids under the age of eighteen that have a lot of fun at open gyms and everything, and to not be able to use those and to, like, especially when it gets colder and sitting around calling your friends, where can we take the kids, and you gotta go to the movies, or you gotta go to the mall, and do things like that, because your community center isn't open. That is just wrong to me. And it's definitely something that I think all residents would pay a little bit more to have that ability.
Thank you. Dave's, Dave's here to tell us CPC will pay for it. Thank you, Dave.
As, as a taxpayer, take that hat off, please. You've got a, you've got a mechanism in place. Everything is fee-based, and we understand that. You've got a revolving fund in rec, you've got a revolving fund with the other side. The monies could be generated, could go through the revolving funds, it gets to you where you need. But that's salary and wages. That's up to you folks.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, if the board, you know, is, is so indulged, I, I know the library did a great job, and we opened on Mondays. And I think that was my first year here, and, and we put together a plan. And we can do something similar, just to give you a sense for the order of magnitude and, and what that would be. And we certainly will take into account funding it out of revolving account fees versus kind of keeping it open.
Thank you, Chris. Anything else?
I'll let you talk. Tony Fandom, I have, uh... Briefly. Yeah, thanks, man. At times. Uh, three children, same thing. Um, Carolyn does a great job. She really does. My issue is, is, I've been running the youth league basketballs since second grade, third grade, my boys. And the main thing is, like, this weekend, I know, this week, Wednesday, we looked, the kids are out of school, no school on Wednesday, right? No. No school Wednesday or Friday. Community center's closed. But, no, it is open, hang on, it's open for the over fifty-five men's league. Are you kidding me? There's fifty-two weeks in a year, forty-nine weeks out of the year, pretty much, is, could dedicate to the fifty-five and over basketball league. It's, it's Christmas Vacation, maybe Easter Vacation, Winter Break, this week, this Wednesday, it's Friday, it's closed, Friday? Closed Friday, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Open Saturday?
Yes.
Saturday, closed Sunday. I mean, that's, you know, four days. I got kids and everybody, and I talked to a lot of guys who were supposed to be here tonight, but they're like, I just gave up on the community center. No sense even going there. It's never, it's never open. You go there, it's, like I said, twelve-thirty to five-thirty, or twelve-thirty to two-thirty is the over fifty-five group, and they take like half the court. If you want to just put the net up and just have open gym, I, I don't know what, what that status is with those guys. But, you know, for three weeks out of the year, three, maybe four weeks out of the year, you can say, hey, you guys, kids are off this week, kids are off this day. You know, you can come if you want, but you gotta pay with the little kids, or the, or the youth, or whatever. So, it's just like, and, you know, my kids live in the South Shore, and they go, and they, they actually work in this facility. It's like eight basketball courts, terrars, everything. They work there, and if they go and play, they still have to pay. They get wristbands, it's like eight bucks. It's very simple. You walk in, you get wristbands, you put the wristbands on, and it's certain colors for whatever day, and it's, you know, five dollars a day, six dollars a day. I mean, we, I would do it. I know in the youth, and I'm not opening a whole can of worms because, like, trying to get the gyms with the school and all that, it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy. So, we go to Chatham. You hear Chatham? You put down the fake, fake address, so you can get in there if you have to, you know. You know, well, I've been knowing to do something that, but it's better than getting to ride with, you know, Buck. But I mean, it's like, there's nothing open as far as that, you know, and it... You know, and I, like, I've always had the gyms, and like I say, I mean, they're in the South Shore, and it's, I mean, there's, it's eight courts, there's eleven courts. I know you cannot get in there. They just pay. They just pay. Eight bucks, they work there. I mean, like I said, Carolyn do a great job, but that was my big beef, is like, you go in there on a day off. And remember, private school kids, a lot of times, a lot of like Sturgis and all those guys that don't have schools during the weeks, they go there, they can't, you know, it's not open. But to get wristbands, even on a Sunday, you wanna come in on a Sunday, it's gonna be, I don't care, two bucks, four bucks, you know? You get ten kids, you, you're gonna make money. It's not, shouldn't be rocket science.
Thank you, Tom.
Does that mean I'm done, Mike?
I, I don't wanna give you bad news.
Time's up.
I don't wanna give you the bad news, but it's not hardwired to cable anymore. It's on YouTube, and they can see this.
So, so...
Not till tomorrow, though. You have time.
Chris says, you wanna, you wanna talk, Karen? I was gonna say, Chris has proposed a direction, and I would suggest we, we take him up on that direction. Carolyn?
I'm not gonna talk long, and I apologize, but I just have to say, because I feel the love in the room, trust me. Someone could get those dots out of my back. Um, the community center is open longer than any other building in town, other than police and fire, which is twenty-four hours. Currently, the community center, and I appreciate what Don said, we're looking at the community center, the recreation department, the council on aging, Channel eighteen. There are very different things inside that building. So, to know what you want open, that would be important, because you're not gonna expect Norm to jump in a police car and arrest somebody, even though they share a building. So, people have to be trained to do the right things. And I just wanna say from the community center, I appreciate Chris saying that, we're open, um, six AM till ten PM, Monday through Friday. Saturdays, nine to four, except in the winter, we extend those hours. So, on an average, we're open eighty-eight hours. I currently have staffing for sixty-four. There's no doubling up. We're doing this building, we're opening up the cultural center. So, I appreciate that people want the building open. I would love it open, but I really just can't sit there and let you say, the building's never open. It's open more than any other building. So, I would be glad to put those numbers together, but please, and I know you said about the men who are fifty-five and older, but those people pay taxes, too. Our job is to make sure everyone has equal time inside the building. So, whether they're seniors or young children, we really are working hard. And, uh, I'm not speaking for Eric or for, um, Judy, but we take it very serious, that building, and I hope that people don't ever think that they are not welcome there, because everyone is. Thanks.
Thank you, Carolyn. With nothing further, I just wanted to thank Carolyn before, before she got up and said that. I recognize you're working a lot more hours than is on your schedule, so thank you for all you do for the town. We'll work through this. Okay, moving back. Selectmen's proposed holiday meeting schedule for Christmas and New Year's Eve.
I'm not coming to New Year's Eve. So, Mr. Chairman, there's, there's two things. One, at least has been the tradition here, that during the holidays, um, with all that being said, too, I mean, there are elements in the contract that we can't have people work on holidays, you're just gonna pay for it. So, I mean, you know, there are always options. Uh, to that, and I asked staff to kinda put together what have we historically done. There are, by state law and by contract, certain days, and then we ask for additional selectmen's holidays during, generally during this time of year, the selectmen will do holidays. We, we heard it from last year about, uh, being closed a little bit too much. So, we, we have recommended, uh, the following, that the selectmen declare Friday, December twenty-second, which is a half day, a holiday, and then Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, as a selectmen's holiday. So, the town hall would be open for the, the balance of that week. And as here would be in the bound, it's called for in their contract. We wouldn't stay open late that week. I mean, to be honest, that's probably not a very productive week to begin with. So, we would be open until four o'clock on Wednesday and Thursday, and then noon time on Friday of the Christmas week.
Thank you, Chris. Um, you know, I had a conversation with staff when they proposed this, and I don't see how this is friendly to the taxpayers. Being open two and a half hour, two and a half days for that week is doing a service to the taxpayers. Now, the traditional part of this that you talked about, I think when this falls on a day that makes sense, we always did it. I think, uh, when it falls on days that we're gonna short the public, um, all but two and a half days to come into town hall, I'm not sure that it makes sense. And I don't believe that, I think traditionally, they've been issued based on days that make sense, that weeks that we're not gonna lose two full days or three full days. So, with that, I'll open it up to the board, and I, I don't, I'm, you know, personally, I think this is really an administration decision. I, I respect that it says, um, uh, selectmen's holiday. I understand that, but the memo saying, in the, in the spirit of Christmas, I'm very Christmas oriented. My house is already decorated. But the, uh, I, I'm not sure that this is really a benefit to the taxpayers of the town, Harwich, and I don't believe it's consistent with the rest of the departments.
Just, just to that point, Mr. Chairman, I actually, when I started here, I started December twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen, and it's a ghost town. So, I mean, you know, I, I've said this before, Friday afternoons, when I walk out of the building and I see people trying to get into the building, I, I understand that. This week, there's not a lot of people coming into the building. So, I, I think in the past, maybe the board has recognized that, that it tends to be one of the slower weeks that, that occurs. And most people usually take their holiday, or take, uh, vacation time, so if it's not open, then they take vacation time, and we're skeleton-staffed anyway. But I, I just throw that out as a, as a thought.
Janelle?
So, selectmen holidays, though, also pertain to the community center, correct?
Yeah, actually, just to that point, I, I always encourage the library and the community center that if we, if the selectmen give seven hours a holiday, that they do seven hours on their end. But because they are open on Saturday, they have to juggle a little bit more than we do, cause we're not open on the, on the Saturday.
So, there's school Friday, and, uh, people work also. So, I know a lot of middle schoolers have gone to the library in the past and gone to the, uh, my son goes to Fun Fridays, uh, at the rec department on Fridays after school. They come and pick him up. So, I don't think Friday should be off. Um, Christmas is Monday.
Christmas is actually on a Monday, yes.
Yeah, so Friday I have a problem with. I thought the twenty-sixth, I thought that was, um, part of everybody's contract to have the day after Christmas off anyway.
No, actually, in this, uh, contractually, we owe the employees Christmas Day and then a half day on Christmas Eve. So, I think the rationale on the half-day Christmas Eve was, why not pick it up on the, the Friday? Because we owe them a half, so we owe them a day and a half, i- is the best way to, to visualize that.
Christmas and a half.
Christmas and a half for Christmas Eve.
And they close, or on Friday at noon, so you figure...
Christmas Eve this year is on Sunday, so...
So, you're picking it up on Saturday.
We either, we either give it to them on a half-day Friday, or we truncate the, the Tuesday.
So, I would, I, I s- I hear what Michael was saying about, you know, not being user-friendly. Uh, it certainly concerns me about having the library and the community center closed too many days during that week. So, I guess I would say, no Friday, and, um, do the half-day on the, on the Tuesday, not the fr- oh, well, I guess Friday. Do it on the Friday, but not take Tuesday off either. I know, that's kinda scrooge-y, I'm sorry.
To call a few other towns today, Chris, and everyone's got consistent hours. I just, I, I, you know, you guys use the words traditional, and I, I don't wanna be the guy that screws up tradition, but, again, when it makes sense, it makes sense. When it doesn't fit into making sense, why isn't it just in their contracts? Larry, you have a comment on this?
Yeah, I would, uh, you know, I think tradition, at least before it was on, we would, uh, there was requests to have the, you know, the day before. And we refused to do that. We, I think a lot of times, people will give them some time off in the afternoon, but not make an official, not to codify it, so it becomes an official. So, I, and I actually don't quite buy the argument that because there are not a lot of people coming through, it's not a worthwhile workday. Cause everyone has paperwork, work to catch up on. A lot of times, being somewhat quiet, when you are most productive, you can catch up on your paperwork. And because it does fall on Monday, so have Monday, Tuesday, uh, you know, the normal half-day on Friday, to me, makes some sense.
So, you're giving an extra day. You want one selectmen holiday, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Not Friday, the twenty-second, but twenty-sixth.
Right.
I could agree with that. Um, I, I think that it is hard that, that the twenty-second is, I get, I get the rationale, I, you know, that it's the half-day, but could they, I mean, the day after Christmas makes sense. I think a lot of places would be...
Yeah, I thought it was part of the contract.
Yeah, but I mean, so, but if we owe them the other half-day, can it be that they can take that half-day whenever they want, or is that a problem?
No, well, I, I think under this scenario, that if, if we owe them a day and a half, so Christmas is easy, cause it's Monday and that's off. So, then Tuesday, if you made Tuesday the whole day, it basically be a half-day as a selectmen's holiday and a half-day per contract.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
I'm good with that, yeah.
And then Friday's a normal workday, which is a half-day anyway.
Which is a half-day anyway.
And they'd still be open late on Monday night that week?
No, because it's Christmas.
No, we would do regular hours.
No, the, no, the previous week. I mean, the nine, the sixteenth, the eighteenth, sorry, eighteenth would be regular hours.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's just the holiday, it's just Christmas.
Don, you all right with that?
I, I was hiding. I didn't think you'd find me. I kinda feel like I'm being asked to put coal in my kid's stocking on live TV, but, uh, I, I, I agree with that, but I, I do have a question for the chair. Are your decorations up because you left them up from last year?
That's disturbing to me. I am not...
No.
That's a story in the streets.
I have OCD.
I, I'm, I'm fine with what you just said.
You can come over to my house.
I will.
Yes, okay.
Summary of sewer regulations. Chris, I don't know how much we wanna get into this... Summary of sewer regulations, Chris, I don't know how much we wanna get into this.
Yeah, I don't mind, uh, uh, whittle down fifty-nine pages down to two.
Okay.
So, just in the endeavor to, and I'll go quick. On, um, just to, for folks, and maybe we could put this, uh, on the, on the website, so people don't have to go through the whole thing. I, what I try to do is just look at the regulations specifically related to what homeowners probably will have some interest in. So under existing structures, uh, basically regardless of flow, they maintain that flow. So no person shall modify an existing structure or change it so as to increase the wastewater flow. So the idea is that what you have today is what you have tomorrow. And again, I'm simplifying this stuff, so. On an undeveloped parcel, it would be an estimate as to what would be utilized for that undeveloped parcel. On, uh, building sewers and connections, there'd be two classes, so it would be residential and commercial are considered the same, and then service for establishment for producing industrial is separate. Generally, industry has more complex waste issues than a simple home or a, a simple business. And then, um, another section here, all costs and expenses in- incidental to the insulation and connection of the building to the sewer become the cost of the owner. A separate and independent su- building sewer is provided for every building, you ha- you can't co-mingle, uh, different concepts. And if you have an interior lot and no private or public sewer is available, uh, so there's, if you have a funky situation where you may have an in-law apartment separate or in a separate building, uh, this addresses that. Uh, it encourages old sewers to be used to connect to new ones. And properties that have a, uh, an existing septic system, you're able to utilize parts of that if you're, uh, can do it. Uh, the next item, property that is, uh, generated, uh, once the pipe is in the ground, you shall be connected to the common sewer within three hundred and sixty-five days of written notification from the Board of Health that the sewer line is available. And then on the use, no person shall discharge or cause to be discharged stormwater, surface water, groundwater, or any other, other than just traditional sewage material, and cleaning, maintaining, and repairing. Uh, building sewers from the building to the property line of the street is the expense of the owner. So I think that's an important element. And then the design of sewers, that any new sewer should be, uh, designed, the connection should be designed by a professional engineer, licensed to practice in the Commonwealth of Mass. I think part of the rationale why Chatham did that was that they have a requirement of septic system, has to be designed by an engineer, so they thought the sewer connection should be done by an engineer. And plumbers and private contractors of established reputation and experience, uh, who are on our list would be approved as licensed utility installers.
That was pretty simple. Thank you, Chris. And we're, we're, do an update from CDM Smith on kind of where they're at with East Harwich, and, um, I know that that's one thing left on our list, is to develop that list of who can, cannot install. I know we're a ways away from it, but...
Yes.
The sooner, the better.
We had kind of news today that, you know, the design is running a little bit late, so we probably will be into January before we have the elevations. So I know some folks have seen people out in the field, so if they're out in the field, they're...
They were surveying my street this week, but, uh, as Chris said, so it's told today that, uh, they're hoping to get the survey data and, uh, probably tomorrow, back to CDM Smith. It's been, and then there'll be a little while before they, you know, put that data in a, in a form we can understand, so.
Thank you.
That actually brings up a good point, though, about, so when they want those, the engineers to design the system, 'cause then, on, once those plans, they have to work their way from the town DPW, and then they get approved. And I know that they were using a contractor in Hyannis, Chatham was, that, again, that was taking a long time to, to process that, and you couldn't do your, you couldn't actually hook up till that had all been done, so we should look at that closely about turnaround time.
Hey, Millie? I'll put it on, great.
Oh, yeah.
All right, Town Administrator's report.
Did old businesses, do you wanna pass over that intention to Mr. Chairman?
Oh, no, I do, but no. Potential creation of backup bylaw for time, place, and manner on marijuana. Given the news that came out of Brewster, uh, which the bylaw, the, the, uh, prohibiting marijuana bylaw failed, as well as the moratorium extension failed, I, I thought we should at least bring this topic back to have a conversation about a backup bylaw for town meeting for time, place, and manner. Because if both of ours fail at town meeting, it's wide open for the town. So, is there any interest in the board to discuss this? Dawn?
Yeah, this is cut, not that I said I, not that I'm gonna say I told you so, uh, but Brewster was the poster child for what I was concerned about. I, I, I really think we need, uh, have the planning board have a fully fleshed-out, uh, alter- alternate bylaw, uh, to go into town meeting too. And here's the reason, it's not like we're pushing this, we're saying, I'd love to see three of these in town. We've done this before, we did it on the adult entertainment district, and it wasn't because we wanted to see three strip clubs in Harwich, it was because we wanted to make sure that there was an availability, but it was the availability that we wanted as a community i- if, if things failed and somebody did wanna come in. Otherwise, it's all open, you could go anywhere. Uh, and, and that's my concern, is I, I'll repeat, I'm not sure, you can get a two-thirds vote to either approve its use or ban its use, we need to have this so that we can contain its use.
Janelle?
I agree.
Julie?
I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't think we need discussion, we need to move ahead.
Chris, you send that to Planning Board?
Yep.
There is an op- option to get the, from what I understand, the moratorium extended until December of two thousand and eighteen. Is that just a simple vote of the, vote of the board and John Georgio, or is that town meeting?
I'll have to look at my notes, I don't recall.
I thought that's town meeting.
I thought that Jo- so I thought that the reason...
The moratorium was voted by town meeting when they did it last time.
Right, but then I thought that that deadline that John told us about?
It doesn't work.
Well, well, it's in, it could be in flux, because if you didn't have one thing in order by that point, that, we're not clear on what's gonna happen.
Maybe worthwhile to have John come back in. I, I know, uh, some of the material he said, I mean, this is kind of a, a fast-moving thing at the, the legislature, so uh, it may make some sense to try to get his recommendation, and he, he provided the language for us already on the moratorium, so we could probably provide that.
Sounds good. Okay, Town Administrator's report.
So I, I just have, uh, four things this evening, I'll make it quick. Uh, we did receive on, uh, Friday, two open meeting law complaints about how things are posted. I, I believe that the town and the Spirit has done it appropriately, so we will put those on the agenda. Officially, the board has to vote those responses, so we will draft the responses and, and put those in. Uh, also, uh, the last month, we've been raided by the Town of Chatham, so they're taking our, uh, town planner, Ally Sabatino and Jay Briggs, our local inspector. Uh, so both of them are, will be departing the organization, uh, shortly, so we will be, um, in the hunt again to, uh, to replace, uh, some of these folks. I guess it's, in some ways, it's a nice compliment, 'cause we're bringing in good quality people, uh, but in both cases, Jay moved up to a different position, so he's making ten thousand dollars more of it, more responsibility. Ally is taking basically the same position, but she's being paid ten thousand dollars more to go next door.
That's a longer conversation that we need to have on...
Yeah, I just, I, I just more wanna, both of them are good quality people, and, and certainly, it's a, uh, kind of a sad loss to, to have them move on. Uh, but it means you're doing something right, too, that people are rating from us. Uh, and then just a, a reminder to the board that, uh, you guys have a meeting on November thirtieth at five-thirty to six over at the high school library on the Montemoye Regional Agreement. So I don't think there's any board meeting on the twenty-seventh, but you will be convening together for, uh, November thirtieth to have a discussion about, uh, over at the, at the school. So just a, a reminder to, uh, to folks. And then lastly, I just wanted to, uh, Thanksgiving is a time in which people travel, so I just wanna wish everyone safe, uh, holiday and, and safe travels, certainly to the board members, to those that have lingered through this, uh, meeting, and to folks at home. Uh, just, uh, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Chris, you too. Selectmen's report, um, no meeting next Monday.
Right.
We would've had to post it Monday because of the holiday, so we would've had to post it before the last meeting.
Oh, the agenda?
Yeah. So no meeting next, next Monday, uh, open meeting law violation, I just wanna touch on that. It's a very, um, uh, serious thing for me anyway, but I, I want the board to know that it was filed the day after we didn't appoint somebody's husband to a committee. And the open meeting law complaint was about a date that wasn't changed, similar to what we talked about tonight. Um, there was a date that wasn't changed, the second part of the open meeting law, or I guess the second open meeting law complaint was that the interview committee didn't put possible vote on what their action was. I did speak to the Attorney General's Office today, as I had before, you don't have to put possible vote, which is why it's not on any of our agendas. If it's on the agenda, the Attorney General says it's reasonable that you're gonna vote on it. So we're clear on that one, we did make a mistake on a da- uh, date again, and, uh, we certainly own that. So we will vote, uh, the letters have already been written. I, I couldn't get them into the packet this week, obviously, and we're not meeting next week. We still will fall into the fourteen business days that we have to respond by doing it at the following meeting.
And just on that posting, it was on the website, and it was on the website itself, it just didn't make it onto the hard copy.
Correct. It's an open meeting law violation, again, it really wasn't.
Not really, I'm just...
We will answer to it, we will own it, and, uh, hopefully, we'll move on. Uh, Selectmen's report, Dawn?
Well, actually, I wanna further what you're saying here. And one would hope, in the spirit of the open meeting law here, if you're gonna be making complaints, that you probably don't wanna publicly say in front of other people that, uh, you're doing it to retaliate for being treated poorly.
That's a good idea. Janelle, Selectmen's report?
Well, actually, Michael, um, we didn't talk about the Selectmen's proposed holiday meeting schedule for Christmas and New Years.
You did, you had the intent on...
That was for the town, you mean ours.
She means our schedule.
Oh, your schedule, your schedule. Well, we're not meeting next week, and then I'll put it on again.
We've appointed you to be here Christmas and New Years.
Selectmen's report, Julie?
I have nothing.
Larry?
Uh, very quickly, uh, Chris and I had a lovely trip today to Boston. It was part of the, uh, Dennis Harwich, Harwich, Yarmouth, uh, community effort on the sewer plant to meet with, uh, DEP officials, and it was a very positive meeting.
Great.
Uh, they've promised to add their support, they've, the key for us was also to help us, uh, communicate why we're doing what we're doing, what the issues are, the problems, and, uh, quite frankly, some of the ramifications, we don't move ahead. But they also promised to, uh, put some muscle behind as much as they can on the grant request we have for the proposal, and we will meet again in, uh, a few months to continue the dialogue, so they're on our side.
Motion to adjourn?